Okay, Lynn, we're ready to go.
Okay, so we, this is a special meeting of the Marquette Township Board. Today's Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, at just 1:00 p.m. Roll call, Randy?
Trustee Eversen's gonna be a little bit late, so I won't mark him as excused as of yet, but if he doesn't make it, I will.
Okay.
Trustee LaRue?
Here.
Trustee Marks?
Present.
Trustee Winslow?
Present.
Treasurer Johnson?
Here.
Clerk Katari is here, and Supervisor Durant?
Here.
Staff present, his manager Kengas, Fire Chief Shanahan, and Superintendent Public Works Modinas.
That's a long title. PW, super. Okay, we have no public, so that takes off two and three. We need approval in the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm not aware of any conflicts of interest with the board, so we'll get into it. Today, we're talking about the Township's Capital Improvement Program submittals and a strategic plan for 2021 to 2025 that Susan Radwan put together for us. Where do we want to start? You want to start with the CIP?
I think so.
Okay, and then actually, the game to go, if they want to.
Can I make a comment before we start?
Sure.
I was very impressed going through this, the way everything's been laid out. Everything is there. It can generate a lot of questions, but the basics is there. This is one of the best I've seen in a long time.
The only comment I'll make is the water situation for the CIP, or maybe strategic plan both, might change moving forward based on Supervisor Durant, Manager Kengas' meeting with the city yesterday, so.
Do you want to move that in the middle?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
So, the CIP for the Phase Two of the water project is probably gonna change.
We have to go where we got here, unless we have our information.
Yeah.
So, we could either approve it the way it is, or take that out, or?
I would recommend tabling Phase Two until further notice.
Okay.
We do that when we get to that point.
Just not, yeah, just table it or not accept it right now, put that off.
We'll do a future job.
You can put it in the 20-year plan and keep it 20 years out, as long as we need to.
It'll change anyways.
Yeah, it can stay in strategic.
We can discuss that more when we get there.
Yeah. Is there a plan as to how these are arranged? Does it make a difference?
Considering we have both Lenny and Dan here, my recommendation is we start with Dan, because he'll be the quitter of the two, probably. And then we go to Lenny, and then we can cover anything else.
So, tell me the page we're gonna start at.
Oh, good question.
So, we're taking, first one is recreation, we're gonna take that one off for now. Second one's recreation.
Page 11, page?
Yeah, page 10.
Page 10.
I've got mine, I did bring a copy, though.
Page 10.
So, Dan, you have four, is that right?
Well, I think we could narrow that down to three, because I believe we had discussed that the rescue pumper truck?
Is already in the budget, really.
It's already in the budget, it's counted for.
So, we can delete that.
Make sure we're clear on that.
So, X it out.
Yeah. We had some conflicting schools of thought on that initially. And to be safe, I said, just put anything in there that we haven't actually acquired yet. But this one is already fully budgeted for, assuming we've budgeted enough. So, we can probably cross out page 10.
So, it's budgeted for, so the money has already been set aside?
Earmarked.
And how much mon- and that money actually is a separate fund, so?
This the millage money? This is the millage money, Dan?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, so they've been setting money aside on an annual basis.
Even at capital, it's, yeah, it's approved by the voters.
Correct.
Question I have, have you started the process?
Oh, yes, yep.
Where are you at with the process?
Oh, we're actually, we're meeting again tonight. I think we know what type of truck we're gonna get, we'll finalize that tonight. I think it's gonna replace 77, almost, pretty close, except 23 years newer.
But I'm talking, okay, that's fine, but process of the company and everything else and that, have you got to that point yet?
Oh, yeah, yep, we were down with, actually, we were down at the factory within the last month or so.
Couple weeks ago.
And?
Talking about Pierce down in Appleton?
Yes.
Okay.
We're pretty much committed to Pierce.
I think they got it gassed up for a year.
I wish, yeah, no, once we order, it's gonna be an 18-month, two-year process.
I realize that.
Are they behind that much, Dan, or just?
Behind, and, yeah, parts, we were down there, well, we were down a couple weeks ago, they just got trucks completely built with no axles on them, waiting for axles, so.
And you don't pay for it until they?
No.
Until they send it?
No, we can do that however we'd like, and that's something we're sort of, I'm sort of working out with Lois, too. We can pay upfront, we can borrow money, maybe borrow money from the township a little bit, because we might come up, if we ordered it after this collection season, we might, approximately $100,000 short.
What's their request? What is their request, far as payment?
They don't, they don't care, no.
But it's a better deal to pay upfront than to pay up ahead.
But you're giving them big dollars for, I don't want to, just say, two years. So, if we collect that interest, um, just say $700,000, I mean, you know?
Bad interest.
Yeah, I know, it's bad.
I think you have to make the decision.
You're right.
And bring to us as to what you want to do.
You're right, and it's, we're still on that, I don't know the final number yet, and we probably, we'll probably narrow that down a little bit closer on December 7th or 8th. The factory rep's gonna come back up, and?
They don't even want a deposit?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, yes, they would like us to at least put 50% down.
Okay.
Yes, yep, but usually, a lot of places put, they pay for the whole thing upfront. And if we're gonna order it this year in 2022, we're gonna be approximately 100 short.
That was paying for the whole thing.
Paying for the whole thing.
But if you put down, and six months later, you pay for the additional, can you work with something like that?
It would be a year before we could do that.
Before we get the rest of the millage money to finish it.
What do you think is the best way to go?
Gotta wait and see what the dollars come out.
They're not done yet.
I guess we have to wait and see what the dollars come out at. We're gonna be pretty close this year, but we haven't finalized the truck either, and that's the big thing.
Okay. So, you'll come back to us?
Oh, I'll definitely come back, yes.
Dan, is there a potential price increase that would kick in if we don't pay for it all?
And there is every year, but this year, it happens to be a little more, thank you for reminding me of that. February 2nd, 7% increase.
So, we need to order it and commit before that increase kicks in?
If we're going to, and, yeah, if we're going to. And that, I'm not completely sold on, they increase every year 2% to 3%. This is a 25-year truck, we gotta make sure we're getting it right. We're trying to do all our due diligence, but it's every one of ours' first time doing this.
Yeah, you don't want to get a lemon.
We don't want to do it, we don't want to do it wrong.
No.
So, I don't want to rush just because, I don't, I understand that 7% is a lot of money. I just, we just don't want to do it wrong.
Where do you think you'll get that over there, Tom?
Short-term loan.
You want us to sit over here, Dan?
My recommendation would be a short-term inter-fund loan, or intra-fund.
You're talking a 7% increase on 775,000, you're talking $54,000 more.
But it wouldn't be on that much money, because you have to put half down, so it would be a 7% increase on that.
But if you do it the whole amount, you're talking $54,000.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
So, if we don't do it before February, we're talking $54,000 more. So, we need to do something ahead of it.
I think I'd rather see them pay 2% to the general fund and borrow $100,000 than pay 7% more to Pierce.
Right.
I think you're right.
Why would it just be 7% on the balance?
Because you would already have pre-.
Right, because we would have put that much up, right.
Okay, okay, that's unusual, okay.
Yep.
Well, they can only, yeah, charge interest on what you still owe.
The question I have?
No, that's, it's not interest, it's a 7% increase.
The price.
Right, right, but the, well, wait and see, wait and see what they come back with, because you have lots of room to negotiate.
We do a little bit.
Yeah.
It's a big dollar ticket, yeah, a big dollar item.
If we do it inter-departmental borrowing for $100,000, what kind of timeframe for repaying that?
One year.
We have the dollars and the solid waste, we had 290,000.
We do, that's, we could, if it's a real short term, we could probably use that, yeah.
Yeah.
13 years.
That's why I asked when it will be repaid.
Yeah, he's waiting for the mortgage money.
You're gonna talk to Lenny about that.
I know, that's right.
Solid waste isn't exactly in the best condition at this point, with all the changes.
But you're gonna be making money that year, 1%.
It's an alternative.
Yeah.
Look at that, so.
Okay, so we'll put that on hold.
Yeah, and we are working, we just don't want to get it wrong.
I don't blame you.
That's a big, they had it for 25 years, it's not something like your car and?
Are you checking with other departments?
Yeah, well, Choclate, yes, yeah, oh, yeah, Ishping, or, I'll start at the, at the East End. Ishping Township just ordered, they'll be receiving, or not Ishping, Munising Township, well, just Choclate Township. They ordered theirs a year ago, paid for it a year ago, February, and they're just going through engineering now, and they're changing a lot of things, which you can do, but, and they paid for theirs upfront, everybody has. Ishping, Ishping Township, beginning truck in February or March, and they, everybody's paid for theirs upfront. And we are looking at everybody's and getting their plans and their build outs and everything. Yeah, we're doing our due diligence, it's just, we just want to make sure it's right for Marquette Township, because we're a little bit, we're a little different, too. Choclate, no hydrants, you know, we're trying to use this truck for two different purposes, instead of just a solo mission.
You don't want to get it wrong and then have to live with it for 25 years.
Right.
And say, why did we just?
Yeah, who is that that ordered this, yep? So, and everybody's involved, there's a committee, there's 10 of us, so.
Okay, then you want to look at the water source on 550?
That's something I've been getting with Pete Glover, it's, I know, as probably most of you are aware, we've discussed that for quite a few, quite a few years.
Yeah, Bob Sims brought that up with the board many years ago.
Yep, and I did finally get ahold of Pete, he's been, he's the DNR superintendent for this region, and I'm gonna need his help, and we were, this spring, him and I are gonna try and find a location and a source and a dollar amount, he gave me a $50,000 number, just to throw in there, and then they would also have matching, or funds available, too, for us, if we did put water up there.
Should we set this aside, too? Because, you know, even 550 was part of the discussion yesterday. Not ignore it, but just?
No matter what, they're going to need a source up there, much sooner than you're gonna see water piped up there from the city of Marquette.
So, you're thinking that, because this is desirable, that we're gonna maybe do it in '22 or '23?
If they can find a location, you can knock the project, let that out in a week, once you line up a contractor.
It just basically?
Permits it all out, there's a lot involved, it's over my, you know, that's why I have Pete Glover involved.
And I assume you're taking water from Lake Superior, or somewhere else?
I don't think so, I wish we could.
Where's the access?
The access is our point, we're talking rivers and creeks, or, or putting in a tank.
We've only got, what, 11 miles or something on the shoreline, and even then, that's part of?
So, you gotta find a location first, with water.
And I think it's gonna be a tank, that's the thing that, because it was looked at 10, 12 years ago with Bob, and we were thinking, at that time, the rivers seemed to be a little bit higher, and we were thinking N and N trucking area, but that's definitely out, and that's not good for the fire, it's not a good location for the fire department, so now we're thinking about putting in a tank, in the ground somewhere.
I thought we had a little small parcel in Lake Superior up there.
We do.
So, like, what, a couple acres or something?
Post-simp property.
Right.
By, in Middle Island Point area.
That dried up, because we used to have one there, years ago, and that dried up probably for 15, 17 years ago.
So, basically, you'd have a well system with a tank, really, almost, somewhere up there.
That's more than $50,000.
Well, we're not talking a well, we bring water into it and fill it from here. Yep, we'd fill it.
And just saw your source.
We'd have it in a new sitting there.
How big of a tank?
Probably a big one.
Yeah, Choclate's tank, I believe their underground, their fire hall is 30,000 gallons. So, we would have to fill it that initial time, I'm not saying we need to go that big, I mean, obviously, price.
If you can't get to Lake Superior, you have to put a tank in.
Yep, because the creeks and the streams, and I, we've talked about damming them up, or cisterning, and just not enough water.
How about drilling out there, should?
Now, you're talking, I think, I'm not, Lenny'd probably answer that a lot better than I could, I think you're talking quite an expense that way, versus just putting in a tank.
30,000 if you have a well, if you have good water. I think it's all rock up in that area, so.
You mean, good as far as pressure?
Production. Volume, yeah.
So, if we just get a tank up there, we use it as a dry hydrant, if you will. And once we initially get the water up there from the township, this area, the hydrant area.
My feeling, you just proceed with it and do the best you can?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware, and I know it's been discussed, but this way, it's, oh, they did put it, you know?
It's real.
Well, I hear working on it.
Yeah, like, yeah.
Okay. Then, garage with heat?
I guess maybe, Lynn, what we should do is, after all these items, is check it or say yes or no from the board, and then?
Whether we want to keep it in the budget?
Yeah, so I would say yes on this one, so I'm gonna check it. Unless no one wants it.
But I think we're, good. And then we're just gonna put holes, probably, on the?
I just, I just took it off.
No, I was thinking of the pumper, it's not really even a hole.
No, because it's already in process.
Yeah, but is it, it wasn't part of last year's CIP, was it?
I did not do a CIP at all last year.
Well, there wasn't a CIP last year.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, has it gone through the process? Or does it even need to be in the CIP if it's, if it's part of the millage?
That's what I believe, that's what I, that's my thought process.
Probably doesn't need to be in.
Correct, we put it in there, just?
Okay, I'm gonna do a Linda, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
What did you cross out?
The truck.
The apparatus.
The truck is already funded.
Okay, I know that, now, okay, I know.
It's really not part of the, we're not gonna fund it next year, or for the next five or six years, it's already got a funding source.
Correct.
So, are we gonna change the funding on the water source on 550 to start in 2023? Or are you gonna leave it to start funding it in 2022?
Let's start '22, just so.
Okay, so you need to fund it at $50,000 all those years?
We would pay for it, I think we would, we were trying to pay for it, no, I don't know what happened there.
Yeah, why are all these on here?
Yeah.
Nobody explained the amortization at the bottom, anybody?
That looks like a slush fund to me.
I know what amortization is, but $50,000.
Half a million for a $50,000.
It's probably $10,000 a year if you're gonna do 50.
Well, are you gonna stretch at that far, or are you gonna pay for it all, you're gonna pay for it all once?
It depends on the cost, right, we try and pay for it in one, because I'm expecting the DNR, I'm expecting a $50,000 cost, that was, must have been a fat finger there.
So, really?
No, the field right here, the annual amortization, down at the bottom, man, that should be $10,000.
Right, because otherwise, you get $50,000, $500,000.
Right, right, but you want to stretch it over five years, or you want to stretch it over two years and make it 25,000 for two years? I mean, that's what you're talking, because he's expecting.
Did that auto populate?
Oh, probably.
I can't remember, it's been a long time.
You're expecting to get money from someone else, too.
Correct.
So, really?
I'm hoping not to?
It should be $10,000 a year.
For five years.
And then, if you get extra funding?
Right. I don't know where's that one at.
Where do you get five years from what he presented, though?
Yeah, I don't get five, Lynn, just have it go two years.
He said?
Did you say five years?
Water source, there it is.
Are you gonna try to fund this next year, did you say?
It probably won't happen next year, we'll probably apply for the grant next year, and it will start the following year, expected service life and?
I think we can proceed with applying for the grant next year.
Right, so?
Yeah, term, your terms, I put one in there, it never looked, so I assumed that would have just, I guess.
No, no, somebody got a little, someone pre-populated some stuff.
Yeah, that doesn't look right, because I put in one here.
Okay, so, here's, here's what?
Nobody explained it to you.
Here's what I would suggest we do.
No, exactly.
Once we get through this process today, we will weed all of these forms out and put it onto one?
Excel spreadsheet.
One or two page.
The first page of that spreadsheet brings all the formulas in, it lists each item, what the amortization is and what the total is.
That's not what any of these people did, though. I got PDFs.
They don't have to.
Okay, but I got PDFs, so it's gonna have to be created, so.
But you expect it only to be a one-year project?
Correct.
So, he's not amortizing it at all, okay?
So, when we summarize this at the end, we'll make sure that all of those little details are accurate, based on what we come out of here with.
And I'm hearing him say that he's not expecting this to happen to 2023.
Correct.
Like, you're gonna proceed now?
It shouldn't even be in the CIP, then.
Well, it could be in here for next, you can carry those through.
Only if he's funding it this year.
Are you only funding stuff in CIP for this year? Because people have funded stuff for many years.
Yeah, that's, no, but that's what we're approving, is stuff, this is the 22, capital improvement funding for, for the budget.
So, then we don't even need this one for this year?
It shouldn't be here, then.
Oh, I don't think everyone understands that.
No, all this is just to proceed?
This is just to proceed, I guess this was sort of a five-year, I thought we were doing a fi- and I didn't know?
No, this is for next.
So, we'll put it on 2023, that's gonna be the next one, so don't get to it.
So, 2023.
Except to change that one amortization.
So, actually, that won't be a next year, that's 2023.
No, I'm sorry.
I think the next one's gonna be quick, too.
It's a learning experience.
If Pete said money is here right today, where there's extra money, it could happen, I doubt it, but it could happen.
But you never know.
Is he gonna pay the whole thing?
No.
Okay, so, you're gonna want to amortize, or request, you're gonna want to request whatever that difference is. And if you know it next year, then you can do it in '23.
Okay.
Or if he comes up with the money, then we'll deal with it in the budget next year.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
Got it.
The next one says it doesn't even start till 2023.
Garage with heat?
That won't get built until 2024, I'm thinking.
So, that's not one we need either.
I would just call that 2024.
Why?
And it doesn't go in there?
Because we're hoping we're gonna be able to pay for that with ARPA money. We just don't have a safe legal opinion on whether or not we can use ARPA money for?
Why do you need a, why do you need a heat, which garage you're talking about?
We need to build a new garage.
Okay, you're talking, that's the new garage.
Because the fire hall was built without space for ambulances, and now we have ambulances in there, meaning their out-of-season equipment is spread around in public works buildings.
So, we can come with the EMS code?
Well, we, we need storage, too, so this, this should really be, this is part of the strategic plan discussion on how to do storage. So, this is not gonna be in this budget, either.
Okay, so we can save this for another year.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, ambulance replacement, that's not till '24, either.
Do we need that sooner? We need that sooner.
Dan's thinking sooner.
Yeah.
And this is another discussion for the ARPA funds, because we think this would be a slam dunk for ARPA funding.
It'll be good for everyone who lives here.
Yep.
Plus.
And community, and, or, you know?
Anyone that calls 911 that we're the first responders to?
Plus those other people that don't pay, yeah.
Right, oh, we bill them.
We do, lots of city calls back up.
But we get paid for that.
Yeah.
So, you want to change this to '22, to start funding it, that's, that's a question.
Well, there's a different set of questions there.
Where's the money?
Right.
Well, we got revenue from the ambulance.
See, and that's something I've talked briefly about, I think with Lois, maybe only, to see if it could be done, is you're right, we've, we can't save money with our, but we do generate revenue from the ambulance. So, why can't some of those monies, a percentage of what collected in the ambulance, be put in a separate account for ambulance replacement?
That should be what we're doing.
Right.
That's what, we never have, and I just said, we've got to do something, and we've been putting all that money instead towards our building.
Yeah, but when we got the first ambulance, there should be, that was part of the discussion then, is to make sure we had a maintenance or a replacement account set up. That wasn't done on the first ambulance, either.
We wouldn't know that.
I didn't know that either. I didn't know that either.
Okay, that's Lois' question, then.
That's why I went to Lois with that and said, can we? Because, you know?
The special assessment with no carryover.
Right, because we can, it's separate.
Yeah.
It's in, you know, it's a separate, it's not part of the millage.
You have to ask her then if you've got a chart of account number that would allow that.
So, I have this question, then, about the whole EMS thing, okay? So, we have a EMS department.
We're all one, but, yeah, yeah, you're right.
And funding comes in for that department?
Yes.
Through ambulance runs?
Correct.
Does the money that comes in to that department pay the salary for the people running those ambulances? You're not running two things, though, you're running an emergency services department.
Fire and rescue.
And so, all that money's going into one pot.
Mm-hmm.
And so, at the end of the cycle, you're coming out of the plus, because you're getting paid.
We're paying?
And you're paying off a building.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Paying off the building is, as you'll see, you'll see at the end of this year, we're giving, we're putting a hefty sum down again this year?
Well, maybe you need to be buying an ambulance that's generating your money instead of paying off?
Agreed, a building, agreed.
That you could pay.
Well, and paying off the building too quickly doesn't protect you, either, because that's one of the reasons you want to have that, that debt, to protect you from?
Lowering this.
Not being able to save money.
Right.
Right.
So, if you have, this, if you have, this way, I understand it, so we might have to ask Lois. If you have a five-year, whatever?
That's your problem.
That's why, once it's established in the CIP, you have to fund that, that's why I was talking about that chart of accounts. You have to fund this project, it's part of your expenses for the next five years. So, it's not saving money, but if you have excess money that you're putting on the building, that would help fund this for the next five years.
Well, that's?
Or three, or 10, or whatever the number is.
You can use that.
That's?
I wish somebody would have said that to me a year and a half ago, I just thought of it this year.
Should've been done with the first ambulance.
I just thought of it about, well, six months ago, and I, I asked, I go, can we start taking the ambulance revenue and not putting it in that big pot and wherever, I wanna put it towards specifically to.
That's not special assessment money. That's revenue.
Correct.
So that's your capital improvement projects. That's where you're taking your excess money. It's not really excess.
Right, you're right.
But why can't they have a capital improvement fund that funds that?
Well, you have a replacement.
Right, fund, same thing.
Expenditure line in your budget. Lenny's got it in both water and sewer. He's funding replacements and improvements on an annual basis. You do the same thing. You, instead of putting that money into the building payment, you put it into this replacement expense line. And when you don't spend it, it's earmarked in the reserve for whatever your replacement is going to be.
We were never allowed to do that until we got the ambulance because we never had any other revenue.
Now that you have it.
Now that we have this.
It's a different revenue stream.
So how much money you got? I mean, you know, the bottom line is.
Now, we can't talk like, you know, you can't ask somebody.
It's kinda like at home. The bottom line is, what you got? That you're gonna pay on that building.
This year?
Yeah. How much do you have to pay and how much are you gonna pay extra?
Well, that's a, I mean, that's a, I'm glad this is. And I, I think Lois has told me the answer to that.
Okay.
And I believe we're gonna pay a hundred and sixty-seven thousand this year.
In excess.
In excess.
You could buy an ambulance.
For almost that, yeah.
You could buy an ambulance for the next three years with that extra money. Is that, am I seeing the picture right?
It's about a hundred seventy-five for ambulance.
Yeah, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to use that money that he has the equipment millage for.
That, that's not the money we're talking about.
That's right. But you can't use that excess money for that. That's his, his general fund money.
No, no, then we're not talking about that money. He has excess money from the ambulance.
The taxes collected.
You don't have that much for the ambulance.
No, correct. I'm sorry, not strictly from the ambulance.
So how much do you have for the amb? How much do you have above and?
That would be a lowest que, and the reason I say that is because we put, we pay on the.
I know they have to pay that money.
Right, on the, we pay, we only have expenses for, well, I don't have the chart of accounts in front of me, but we only pay expenses on vehicle, ambulance vehicle, personnel for weekends, coverage.
And supplies.
Supplies, thank you. I'm sure there's a couple of, one or two other small ones.
The week, not all week long when they run with that ambulance, you don't pay.
Correct. Only weekends.
Yeah, see, see, the picture isn't true.
Oh, correct, correct.
It's true, it's the information we don't have.
And it never has.
It's not true, yeah.
You're right. And it would be an accounting, it would be a lot of work. You'd have to hire somebody to keep track of it.
Yeah, correct, cuz you'd have to.
Cuz the hours would be so much in picking, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd need clerical staff in the building to pick how many hours of each of the three of your days, plus anyone that responds is on the ambulance, and subtract it from your total labor costs plus benefits.
So that's why they call it an emergency services.
Right. We do separate, like I said, we do, the weekends we separate out, the on-call and weekends we separate, and all the expenses, like you said, supplies, ambulance, there might be one or two more.
So you can make some assumptions and the board make the decision, this is how you're going to determine your labor costs, that it's for that labor specifically hired to do weekend coverage and put it in its own fund with the ambulance and all the revenues and everything, the expenditures for the equipment maintenance. You can create a separate fund for ambulance services.
Well, you should because you were here when we got it. I made a point of making sure that we have enough revenue to cover the expenses at that point in time, and that we're supposed to take the revenue from the ambulance and put it into an account so we could offset that against any of the costs associated with that, so.
That's when Randy said, even if we break even or make one dollar, it's successful.
Agreed.
As long as we can cover our expenses.
Said that too, cuz we're servicing the peak and we are making.
What you, cuz we, we have not increased our expenses besides, as you, yes, besides the supplies, the two thirty or twenty thousand dollar amulets we bought, which we paid cash for and supplies.
The fire man ran with, ran, ran anyways.
Correct.
So that's why the money stayed in the fire fund. I mean, I get all that, but, but you have an excess of money. And so that excess.
In the fire fund.
Well, yes, but generated by.
Partly.
Part.
Right, that's where you have to pull out. How much is gen, you can pull that out because that money comes in.
Include the payroll side of it.
Not a hundred percent.
But it didn't before, Lynn, because every ambulance call, every nine-one-one call, that fire truck ran anyways. So.
Can I suggest a solution to this issue?
If we like it.
Yeah, only if we like it.
I can suggest it. You don't have to like it. I suggest that Dan and I sit down with Lois and propose a budget amendment to you for the current fiscal year, separate from the budget process that we're going to be getting into next Tuesday, cuz keep all that in mind too. We've already got all the documents published for the twenty twenty-two budget. What action we take today might change some of that, so that may have to be addressed through a budget amendment just because there's not enough time between today and Thursday to make all those changes and get it advertised and all that, because you've got the Appropriations Act, all that stuff that gets impacted. It's just a big chain reaction. So we already know that wages aren't correct most likely in next year's budget, so there'll have to be a budget amendment for that. What we're worried about right now relative to this ambulance is twenty twenty-one revenues. So we need to create this new ambulance fund in twenty twenty-one and reallocate all the revenues and expenditures that we think are reasonable to allocate to that fund.
I don't know if we need to do that. We're already, we're already allocating, it's, it's all into one pot. You mean, do you wanna separate it completely?
Well, it's gonna make it a whole lot easier to justify your fire special assessment and your ambulance revenues moving forward.
Well, I think that's what you two have to get together. Because if you don't get together, you're gonna need the ambulance now.
I agree. It's a lot to change right at the end.
There's more than one way to skin a cat, and it sounds like Dan has a different idea, and maybe he's already talked to Lois. I will say, Lois generally doesn't try to add more funds and accounts than we already have.
We have a lot.
And I completely understand why. It's like pulling teeth to add a cost center, which we still have to do for showing the revenues for heavy equipment replacement. We just bought a loader last year, and we haven't shown any revenue or expenditure, or any revenue specific to that by the department renting it every time they use it. We've been logging the hours, but we haven't shown from each fund what they should be paying into the replacement fund.
Well.
And that's just because we've had so much going on this year with the turnover. I just haven't been able to get that to the top of my pile yet.
I think it's between you two to put together, set down.
With Lois.
With Lois, I agree.
And you wanna buy an ambulance next year.
Oh, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to buy one next year. I'm saying we're going to, but that, that was part, and this, I don't know, I can't remember, it's been six months since I turned this in.
Sell one then, Dan, if you did? Would you get rid of one?
Yeah, definitely get rid of one. We wouldn't, I, we wouldn't get, we, we paid twenty.
Yeah, you're not gonna get much for it.
We're not gonna get much for it. And we are applying, we're assuming, or we're guesstimating that the FEMA grant, the AFG grant this year, is we are gonna apply for an ambulance, and we're assuming that would be very, very high priority, which it is this year. So, I mean, that could happen that way too.
Wanted this twenty twenty-two and then amortize it out however you've come up with the money.
How about we put twenty twenty-two? Let's put twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three on here, knowing that we probably won't have it in our possession before the end of twenty twenty-three.
It's a year, it's, yeah, cuz I just talked, first I just purchased one. I think the other day, they got, they got money out there. They do.
Where are from them then?
I was thinking about buy, if it wasn't a Dodge, I'd buy their old one, but.
Twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three, yeah, cuz I think they just ordered it and it's gonna take a year to get it.
So you, they wanna start on the process this twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And then work through so that it actually.
Don't know where we're gonna get the money. That, that's, yeah, ideally, yes, but I just don't know where the money's coming from yet.
I'll tell you, if you really wanted the money and we didn't have the money, people will vote for that. They'll vote for that because the ambulance services everyone.
Yes.
And there are people on this board that have used the ambulance services and will tell you how.
Don't look at me.
Across from me. Pete's used him. I used him with my parent. I mean, you know, really, the ambulance services the people unlike, I'll be wicked, unlike a baseball field.
We're not gonna be able to pay for an ambulance, so it's next year.
That's why I put twenty twenty.
I don't mean it like that, Lynn. I mean, that's your decision.
Start, right?
You know, I don't mean, I don't mean to, you know, it's obviously you can say, no, you can get it and we'll find the money somehow.
But they can start looking.
We can start, oh, we, we have been looking. We have been looking.
Yeah, but you have to look at your money that's coming in.
Right, and that's what I'm trying, that's what I just decided or asked if we could do four or five months ago with Lois. I go, we need to start taking a percent, we gotta start saving money for the ambulance, but we can't save money, but we can, you know, with the revenue.
Revenue for your ambulance, cuz that's not special assessment revenue money.
So.
Okay, I have an answer.
Okay.
Lois just happened to be standing.
Good.
Not that you guys can't have the conversation, but the basic three or four questions that we were asking. First of all, there is a revenue account for ambulance fees. So we know how much money specifically is coming in for ambulance use, okay? We also have all the breakouts for the expenses, supplies, and everything else. She also has firefighting, where did I see it? EMS, I think is what she's calling it. There it is. Supplies EMS, those are split out. Salary EMS. And she said.
That's the weekends.
She wanted to make sure last year that this was done. And I said, the board was under the, or some of the board members were under the impression it would happen with the first ambulance, and she goes, oh, no.
It didn't.
And I said, that's what Randy told us.
Yes.
That we would, we would be able to identify that money so you'd know how much you had.
Right.
Right? That was the dollar. Okay, so I said, if Dan has hundred thousand whatever excess that he wants to put on the building this year, is there EMS money in there? And she said, yes.
Okay.
So she can tell you how much of that is excess. You just have to ask.
Oh, I, I can, I can figure that out. For those numbers, I can figure that out easy. There's only five things to subtract.
Right.
It's very easy to figure out.
Yeah, I was thinking about it, but I, cuz she was standing there when I went in.
But I would say, start that process next year for replacing that ambulance and then, you know, figure out how you're gonna fund it and move forward. Yeah.
What I wrote down was start this, start the steps necessary to lay out the finances for the future.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two.
So we know where we're at.
So if you think you need to have something in next year set aside, you know, short of your hundred sixty-seven thousand, pull that out and put it into, you've got the capital, that's part of the, probably couldn't use that one.
Well, I will say that, that the capital, I don't have the chart of accounts in front of me, but the capital apparatus, is that the one you're looking at, that very?
That's the, the special millage revenue.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's, that's apparatus. That can be, I don't want to, and that.
But you could use it, yeah, cuz we left it broad.
Yes, you intentionally left it broad. That can be used for any drivable vehicle.
Yeah.
You're right.
You're saying you have a separate apparatus account or line item rather?
Well, it's capital.
Capital is fire department grant, firefighting vehicle, and ambulance equipment.
Uh, firefighting vehicle?
Seventy-five thousand is in this year's budget.
And how much of that?
That's for the pickup. I'm sorry, then it's the other one.
Okay, ambulance equipment?
Nope. Good. Oh, that's one thing I don't like. It's not in the annual, you only see it once a year. You only see it, uh, at the big, it's, yeah, it's not in, it's not in the monthly.
You see what the projected revenue is going to be on the millage declaration form, basically, or in the Authorization Act.
Or in Ernie's form, you'll see it once a month. Ernie's, you know, the one you do once a month?
Yeah.
It's in there every.
Gives you the total.
Gives you the total.
It does.
But I'm sorry, it's not in the monthly.
All right.
Chart of accounts.
So in the interest of getting through this full stat.
Yeah.
Can we agree that twenty twenty-two is going to be when the bulk of the legwork is done for this ambulance replacement? But before we even get to twenty twenty-two, we're not gonna make an excess mortgage payment this year.
This year?
Right, because we're gonna take that and apply it towards the ambulance.
Portion of it. Sounds good.
Right, whatever.
Makes sense to me.
Whatever is part, whatever is the excess revenue from ambulance. Because that you can use however you want. The rest of it is what you have to break even on, so you have to pay for something this year.
That doesn't mean you can't make an extra payment. So if your payment is eighty-three thousand a year, where it was last year.
Well, we pay, this everybody's, we pay eighty-five, and it, it doesn't specify, this everybody's clear, I guess. We pay, I don't have a chart of account, we pay eighty-five to the general fund every year.
For what? Towards the building.
Principal and interest payments.
Well, this is twenty twenty, and there's nothing in there for twenty-one. I don't know why.
You pay the general fund and the general fund pays the loan?
Right, because the loan is on both buildings.
Right, and then we make another payment, so.
Then make an extra payment.
Then, so, so this year, possibly we'll be making approximately, you know, your one sixty-seven plus eighty.
Wow.
So that one sixty-seven needs to be as much of that as possible set aside for this ambulance. If it's coming from your special assessment, then it has to go to the mortgage payment.
Right, right, that's what I was gonna say.
Right, but that's why I want, and that, I just said, well, we gotta do something.
And hopefully only like ten grand of that is from the special assessment, and the rest of it can go to the ambulance.
So she, the estimated total for twenty twenty-one for the end of this year in fees for the ambulance is a hundred and one thousand five hundred. And you guys said that it would only be seventy-five thousand next year. You go.
It's always you.
That's fine. That's fine.
Do you do that at home too?
Somewhere around.
Cuz that's you.
Yeah, somewhere around seventy-eight thousand.
Less than what you expect. And you don't know, it could be, it's slow, we could have pandemic next year, nobody calling ambulance, you don't know.
Half of what you were gonna put on the building, you would put into this, into the ambulance.
The one thing, you've danced around one thing, paying the building right now on the current interest rate. We don't know what the new interest rate's gonna be on.
That's true.
Does it balloon next year?
Talk to them now. Did anyone go talk to them?
It's not a priority yet. We have way too many other things that I'm juggling right now.
Is it ballooning next year?
I think it's twenty.
I don't know whether.
I think it was five years.
I could do it, but I.
No, seven, seven.
Seven?
It was a seven-year balloon, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, whenever, yeah, go see them.
How long have you had it?
We're all together. We're all on the same loan.
Yeah, it's a combined loan.
That's right, yeah.
And we break out the cost for the two and then.
Yep.
I think Dan knows what he needs to do to figure out how to set aside as much money in the.
I just wanna make sure that I could do with that. That's why it was a, just make sure I could do that.
But the major premise is it's a next year need.
It's a twenty twenty-two, so let's, we can, I can get with, or we can get with Lois soon and put that, put that line item in for next year.
It's already there, yeah. Yeah, talk to her. She knows what we're talking about now.
Can't you find a good enough?
But remember, these chart of accounts come from the state, so we can only have some.
Bad names.
Okay.
Figure it out with you.
That's it for you.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah, it is. This was a good, very, very productive one.
That took me longer than I thought. That's okay.
Well, I'm glad.
It was, it was actually really good conversation because.
It was. We've been talking about this for two years. I go, some, we've got to sit down and figure this out. So this was a great discussion.
So the CIP for twenty twenty-two needs to include the ambulance replacement. And the amortization will start next year.
It really wouldn't though, but, cuz even if we, even if we got around to ordering it in, just say, March, we wouldn't even see it till.
Don't wanna have it.
Till the following year.
It's not gonna be in next year's budget.
It won't be next year.
But you have to pay for it upfront though.
Not that, that one, we wouldn't, oh, and the ambulance, I don't, that I don't know, on an ambulance.
Maybe, maybe not.
I'm sorry, Ernie, I don't. On a fire truck, you do, an ambulance, I don't know. This is the first.
Probably have to pay something down.
You're probably right. You're probably right, Randy.
Here's my recommendation. Put that down as a twenty twenty-three, knowing that we're gonna do everything we can in our power to find a way to purchase it. Make, order it next year.
Yeah, you can do that, right?
Yeah.
So it's still won't be in next year's budget.
That's what I wrote down, starting twenty-two, with twenty-three getting the ambulance.
So then really, so it's a twenty twenty-three CIP, even though starting next year, but it'll show up in the twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, and if, if we find a way to fund it, we're gonna pay for it as soon as we have the money.
Yeah.
ARPA.
There you may be.
I better leave now.
Do you want an ambulance or building a parking unit?
I'll take either one.
Okay, I guess you're dismissed.
There you go, thank you.
That's Lenny.
Good luck, lady.
So I think we're gonna be crossing some off right away, looking at yours too, because the first two, the Center Street lift station is already funded. We just have not bid it out yet, and I'm hoping that's gonna go up to bid here in the next couple of months.
So that's a done already. The first two are done.
As well as the Cox Pump House generator.
Yep.
Really my comment, top priority, go get the grant, move forward. Really what we're talking about.
We already got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant towards the Center Street lift, lift station generator. That's gonna, that's gonna pay for part of it. We also had been, under Kirk's replacement schedule, your replacement and improvement schedule had been socking money aside, earmarking for both of these two.
Six or seven hundred thousand of that went in cash, remember? That goes, we're back to full circle of having the discussion of setting money aside and using it for something else. So even though it's funded, the money might not be there.
It's there.
Is it?
Because we have adequate reserves to cover it.
Okay, so this is not gonna be in this budget.
What you have to assume, when we spent money that was not planned in a CIP, let's throw it out there, South Vandaboo, right, and Grandview maybe? Those were the two that I've heard enough about.
South Vandaboo triggered that.
Yeah, so those would have been coming out of the, help me out, Lenny. The fixed asset accounts, not from earmarked funds for other specific projects that were in your CIP.
No, because, no, that's, no, that's not right.
We're gonna have an issue then, because I don't know how else you do it.
He said he took cash. That has to be.
He burned down the reserve.
General fund.
The, the cash is all in one account, as you know, and Lois has an accounting of how it theoretically is being set aside. But we all know every year an emergency comes up and it changes the whole equation, right? And what has been happening historically, those numbers have never been updated, and that's what Dave Wigan's whole heartburn was.
Well, that was Danny Popos too.[1735.84]
Well, I haven't been here that long, so I'm only going back as far as my history. What we have to look at is, do we have enough money in the reserves to cover the projects we've earmarked that we're intending to move forward on?
Yes, that's correct.
First, whatever's left is equally dispersed among each of the different fixed assets we have for that utility. As a function of the ratio of the total cost to replace all of them. And we might come back to you next year and say, Lenny and I agree, we need to replace all of our pump stations on both sides of the house, so we need to take all of our reserves that we have and reallocate it all to those projects, because that's the only thing we can do. Or, we're going to leave it all there and just borrow the money. Because those are really our two options, right? What we don't want to do is get so bogged down in the details that you think every penny has to be accounted for, because this is the only place I've ever been where people want to do that. If that's what the taxpayers want to do, we will, but I can tell you, it doesn't mean a lick of beans.
And the only reason that came up was because the board at the time didn't understand, when we were earmarking something for five years, saying, okay, we're funding this, you know, hundred and twenty thousand, we kept going back to that ATV generator. It was always at the top of the list.
ATS generator, yep.
ATS, thank you.
But ATS is Automatic Transfer Switch, just so you know.
Why, we couldn't figure out why we kept funding that year after year after year, and we didn't have it put in. And I don't, it must have been Dan that was asking.
Dan was always asking.
He started it, saying, well, how much do we have in that fund? And that's what he was trying to figure out. If we've been funding this and we're not spending that money, and it's been another five years, where does the money go?
It goes into the reserve, it's just, you've committed to that purchase, so that portion of money that you set aside every year is just like the, the police vehicle we buy every so many years. We set money aside every year, we don't have a line in the budget that says, we have this much in savings towards this car. We have to go back to all the various budgets that we've done over the years and say, okay, we set twenty thousand aside this year, twenty thousand aside this year, twenty thousand aside this year, we have to pay sixty this year, we just put twenty aside for three years we can pay for.
As long as the general fund has that amount of money. Our general fund is a different total than his general fund. I shouldn't say general fund.
His reserve.
Reserve.
But somewhere, oh, in my mind, somewhere, I want to see that twenty thousand dollars and that eighty thousand dollars does not get depleted out of that fund.
We don't, that's, that's.
The only way that.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so, yeah.
So how do we know how far it's funded?
You have to set up separate funds. You can sub-fund stuff down out of that thing that only you see.
Which was what we were looking for, we were looking for earmarked accounts.
And an Excel spreadsheet. Lois could tell you, here's how much money's in the Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, but.
This much money is all committed.
And that's what we thought the spreadsheet was.
Please, please, can I, can I step back? I've been here two years, and this has come up every budget cycle, and I've been in two positions in that time. We have to get caught up on everything we're doing so that we can give you numbers that we believe are good numbers. We don't want to rush to get you something, and if you want to make, make this your priority so we have it at the next, next Tuesday's board meeting, we'll drop everything we're doing and have it for you for that meeting. But it takes time, because Lenny wasn't in his position two years ago, and I wasn't in mine. In fact, I was only in his position for however many months. So we have to go back and look at all of the budgets and make sure, if Lois has been tracking it, it's going to be easy. I just can't verify that, because, right now, without going and talking.
And she's only been tracking it for maybe a couple of years, so.
So it was just all done and not tracked?
Yeah.
And so nobody really knew how much was in the pot?
Correct, we didn't have good numbers.
I, I wouldn't say that. I think Kirk had a really good idea, because he was doing this every year for forty years. Now, what he didn't take into account is when he went and did other projects that weren't part of that process, that took money away.
So he took money out of the pot.
From the big pot of money.
Without having money put in there for that project.
Or without having it accounted for, so, like I said, when he'd come in and say, we still have another year or two or whatever on this generator, we're saying, it's been funded, where's the money?
Okay, but.
Then when.
That goes back to the whole amortization schedule, though.
Yes, it was not, it was an amortization schedule, it wasn't a fund schedule as to what was being applied or saved for each account. So you just said in the beginning of the discussion, okay, we can either go get the money from the bank, or we can just take all of it out. Okay, so what happens to all of these? What happens? How can you identify? If you have, if, let's say in theory, we have ten CIP items, and they total, the funding is, for, for this year, let's say, is a hundred thousand, okay, just for numbers, and you go and take a whole bunch of that money out, how do we know what happens to these? And my argument to support Dan was that it's the board decision on how we spend this money, and it should be the board's decision on if we move funds. And we may agree to say, okay, instead of going to the bank and borrowing whatever, five hundred thousand, we're just going to take it out of the funds. We don't know what we're giving up that has already been funded.
Okay, but, but let's keep in mind, the reserves we have are not one hundred percent earmarked to a project that you've already approved as a CIP.
Correct.
A lot of it is replacements towards fixed assets, so that when something needs to be retired and replaced, you have a bank, a pot of money to pay for it, just like Lenny's doing hydrants now, right? Out of his fixed asset accounts, as opposed to his operating budget.
But fixed asset should be a separate line item.
I would say that she'd probably say it's a balance sheet item.
It is.
And it's not part of the budget.
It is.
See, I think the major problem we had is when we did, and this is when at Grove, when we did Grove Street, is we had a big amount of money, we had items budgeted, this, when the money got spent, we just didn't update this to show that the money wasn't there anymore.
We didn't have anything to update.
Well, at the time, yeah, but we do now.
Which is why I asked for a spreadsheet to, to show, and the board said, something like a checkbook. You know, you have five hundred thousand saved toward this million-dollar project, but the board is agreeing, okay, we're going to take two hundred thousand out of that and fund it for another two years.
Well, and that was part of the problem, because Kirk did the project, and we agreed the board approved it.
Because we didn't know.
But, yeah, we didn't know where the, well, it was communication issues. So we took the money, and then, so the money for some of these projects that were, were depleted, so.
So he spent the money that was allocated for projects on something else, but you didn't adjust that on your form?
Correct, that's what happened.
Why don't we wait till, why don't we wait till John and Lenny?
I mean, in the big picture, I'm not worried about it, because we have staff that can deal with this. I don't want to get nitpicking, and.
As long as staff can tell us.
Correct, but I don't want to be a nitpicking, because then we don't look very well, as we're, we're looking like we're trying to, I mean, we do, but we don't need to nitpick as long as they know.
I don't think this is nitpicking when you're talking about millions of dollars, it's, as long as we understand the process, I think we can agree.
Well, it's not that, it's just that we're arguing about how we're, the communication is, is going as far as what's funded.
I think the process needs to be updated.
What you need to understand is how much of our reserves is earmarked to a, a project that you've agreed to.
Right, yes.
How much of it is earmarked for capital replacements not yet identified, but knowing that we need X million dollars to be in the bank for when we need it, so we don't have to borrow it forever, right? I think we can probably do that, and, you know, the last time Dave Wigan was in one of these meetings, I feel like he had convinced me that it was an easy thing to do. There, I've just seen things done in so many different ways every time I go to start it, and I know that the way I wanted to do it isn't going to tell you every answer that you want. So what I have to do is give you more information until you say, okay, now I get it, that's enough, right? Where the rest of it is this pot of money that is sort of sitting there, hoping to build up to a really big number that you can tell the residents, why do we have such a big number? Because our asset management plan says, we need ten million dollars to replace what we have in the next twenty years.
Right, but if another South Vandenboom project comes up, and we say, and he says, oh, yeah, it's got to be done, or if it's Okels or whatever, any place.
It's coming out of that pot of money that we're trying to grow.
That's all I'm trying to figure out, is where, where's the money coming from? That's what he always says.
Yeah, and what projects are put in, put in hold for that.
The process itself, it's just like hiring somebody. You don't, you don't think about the Randy Gerard, you think about the job description. When you're hiring the person, you think about the job and not the person. So the same thing falls here. If we're going to, if we have a public works superintendent that we can't trust, and we don't know we can't trust him, the process, the process has to allow the board to make the right decision.
Yeah, I get, I agree.
So he says, okay, we got two million dollars, okay, I'm going to budget this much, and this much, and this much, and all my CIP, and the board says, okay, it sounds great. Well, next year, we're short. But he says, oh, but this has got to be done. Okay, we have, we're going to split it up, and we're going to do it this way. Okay, next year comes around, we're short again, we got to raise rates. If the process itself doesn't give anybody that's new on the board the answer, it's going to fall to him, and it's probably not him.
So moving on.
You've got uncommitted and committed funds. Once you get that, then you start breaking down what the committed funds are for. They're sitting there, but if something major comes up, you may have to dig into that committed funds to, to fund it.
But that's our decision, we as a board have to make.
I understand, but I'm saying.
Based on good information.
Right.
But, but, that's what I'm saying, is we've committed this, but all of a sudden, something major happens, we need the dollars, well, we may have to tap into that committed funds for.
And then we better have a plan how to put those committed funds back.
Yes, yes, I agree with you.
And it could be raising rates, it might be raising rates, it might not.
Right.
Staff, work on a commitment to giving you the information you need to feel comfortable that you know we're not planning to use this money.
We don't need the minutia, all we need is the basic idea that we have a million dollars in the fixed asset account, or whatever you want to call it.
It's the reserves.
The reserves, okay, we have a million dollars in there, and everything is all budgeted, we've got, you know, all the CIP is okay, but a special project comes up, and we know that there's a million dollars in there, and, and Lenny comes in and says, I'm taking two hundred thousand out of that fixed asset account, that's all we need.
It didn't, it, as long as you know it came out of fixed assets and not an earmarked project that you have to put on hold.
So it's communication.
Does that make sense, Lenny?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, it is.
I think I understand it a lot better now, and.
Can you see how it evolved wrong?
Yeah.
And we were approving stuff that we didn't under, you know, the project's got to be done.
Right.
It's got to be done, this is, we got a leak, or whatever, you know, this.
I, I think a lot, what we, what we put together here was looking forward with the big projects. I mean, of course, we can't tell when a twenty-five thousand dollar pump is going to burn out or something, I mean, that's the stuff that we're going to.
And you have to have that reserve.
That, that's where we're going to have to, like, we got to do this now, but when we're talking about, like, projects and stuff like that, that's where we're going to have it right at the beginning for everybody to see, this is what our brand scheme plan is here.
We know what the CIP is for 2022, or what it's going to be.
Yeah.
And, and these funds are going to be, all of this is what it is. So if something weird comes up during the year, and we don't have to have this to prove this, we don't have to have this next year.
So I think that's where it's going to be like communication.
For 23, I think if you can figure out how to give us, and then at the same time, if something comes up in July, and you do have to spend twenty thousand dollars, now you know how to explain to the board where the money's coming from.
And I, I mean, I think we're, we're, we try to be as John and I try to communicate, if somebody has a question for us, we're going to try to give as many answers as we can to try to make, you know, understand what we're talking about, so you.
Much easier to understand.
Well, what, I don't disagree from that perspective. I mean, the more we talk about it, the more clear it's getting to me on what you actually need. If we have a hundred thousand dollars in the bank, and we set aside twenty-five thousand of it, what's it for? And what's the other seventy-five for? If the seventy-five is earmarked for long-term fixed asset replacement and improvements, that's all you need to know. You need to know that twenty-five thousand of it is for X project.
Whatever, yeah.
But, but if you have to spend that, though, if something comes up and you have to spend that, you're going to go to the board and say, well, I got to spend some of that, but it's going to affect, it's going to affect that pot of money.
It's going to come out of the fixed asset account.
And this is how we're going to put it back.
Well, it should be a plan to put it back.
Well, that's all part of the whole rate structure.
Right.
See, that was the problem with Grove Street, is we spent that huge and depleted our reserve fund, and a lot of these CIP projects that were budgeted and, and things, we had trouble funding some of it, because that money that was allocated was spent on that project, so then we were back to square one.
And not a plan to put it back.
Not really, except rates.
Well, rates is not, rates is not always the best plan.
Well, that's why, if this is in place, then the board takes the heat for, okay, we have to raise rates because.
So we had bad informa, we had bad information when we did Grove Street.
Because we funded Grove Street, wow, no one wants to hear that.
Because, because we.
We had insufficient information for Grove Street.
Well, what we should have did with Grove is we should have borrowed the money and left the big pot there, that's what we.
We didn't know that that's.
But that's, that's the communication aspect.
So I think Lenny and I can both commit to you that any time a project like that comes up, you are going to be fully informed on all the details. Part of the reason why is because we're going to clear up this concern first, right?
Correct, yeah.
And then when we come to you and say, we have to upgrade all five of our lift stations, here's our plan for how we're going to pay for it, it's probably going to mean going out and getting SRF funding, because that's the cheapest money we can get, generally speaking, and that's going to show you how over time we're going to pay it down. I think you will feel far more confident in our explanations than what you've been getting in the past, because we're not going to bring a project to you that you didn't already know full, a hundred percent in advance, that this is what we're planning to do, and this is, either it wasn't a CIP or it wasn't, and this is why it needs to happen now, four or five years from now.
So then, moving on.
So, Lenny, move on, what's next year's CIP?
So, we're on the updated motor control and electric center, I think.
Page sixteen?
Yes, and I think that one, we can put that on hold.
So that would be not a.
Hold because.
Like for next year?
Hold for twenty twenty-three.
Well, this is going to, could be dependent on the conversation you and John had yesterday.
So the whole pump house.
Hold for now?
Hold for now, yes.
Anything relative to pump houses on the water system, we want to put on hold until we figure out what's going to happen with this whole feasibility study of the township purchasing ownership in the water treatment plant.
So that's what we're talking about, but not, you weren't really telling us that's what you were talking about, is that?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so tell us what you can tell us.
All right. All right.
Because I feel like we're like-
The city, the city didn't put up a single roadblock when we raised this discussion with them, both at the staff level and at the manager, mayor level. Everyone seems to think this is a really good idea. We're all agreeing to work together if, if the feasibility works out.
So give them the scope of the project, how you-
All right, so-
By the way, he did an excellent job monitoring that meeting yesterday.
So Jenna Smith was there, the city manager-
Karen Kovacs.
The assistant city manager.
And Sean Hobbins.
And then who was not?
Now, remember, who, no, no.
No, no, there were two meetings yesterday. In the, in the morning, Lenny and I met with Mark O'Neill,
Okay.
who's in charge of the treatment plants and lift stations in the city.
And the wastewater plant.
Wastewater and drinking water plants and the lift stations. Uh, Scott Cambenzi, who's the public works director. Bruce Gotheaer.
So before I go any further, remember, this is an open meeting and it's being recorded, so anything you don't want in public, don't discuss.
I think enough of this has been discussed publicly now that I don't need to-
I'm just reminding you, because this'll be po- this'll be posted.
Yeah, also to remind, because it all went through city staff.
Yeah, and this'll be posted and people can listen to it, which maybe some won't, but they might. So I'm just reminding you of that.
So we approached them specifically with one purpose initially at the staff level. And that is, if the township assumes partial ownership of the drinking water plant, then we need to look at the two systems combined to figure out what's the most efficient way to continue getting water to the Cox tank, long-term. And then from there, up to the Northwoods tank, because if we're buying water from the city, we don't have to pump it ourselves, and we can use the well water for expansion to the southwest, and we won't maybe need phase two ever in our lifetimes, right? I'm half a century old almost. I, I think that's probably a fair assumption to make, unless all of this housing just booms like crazy, and then we might even have to pump from Northwoods up to Chapel Ridge, too.
Okay.
Right?
Which we could do.
Yeah, so our thought was, the Lincoln pump station in the city was never upgraded as part of their JCI project for various reasons, and I don't know all of them. It'll probably take them giving me a lot more time than we had yesterday. Our Cox pump house has not been updated in Lenny's time here.
No, not anymore, yeah.
And the Northwoods pump house is also getting there. We're to the point where we need to rehab all of those pump houses with soft start controls, variable frequency drives, so that we can run them as efficiently as possible, keep them out of the high premium electric rate category, so that a lot of those upgrades pay for themselves over time, because you're staying out of that. We're not paying the money to BLP.
Demand charge, yeah.
Yeah.
Like the library.
They were all for it. So we could possibly do a joint project with the city to upgrade three booster stations, all right? They're thinking much bigger picture, and I'm glad they are, because we're currently operating as one system, but probably not as efficiently as we should be, and part of it is that whole booster station situation, because right now, Grove Street booster station is filling the mountain tank, which fills Cox. The way the system was designed, Lincoln was supposed to fill Cox. So we're taking a roundabout way to fill the tanks.
I think people think Lincoln fills Cox.
But used to.
It can. It can in an emergency.
I think they think that.
I don't think they think anything. Nobody knows anything about this.
But in, in an emergency, that can still happen.
Some of them do. Some of them know a lot.
But the city's not gonna turn Lincoln on unless they absolutely have to because of that demand charge that could hurt them, and, and I don't blame them. If we get all of these pump stations up to the same efficiency level as the Grove Street pump house, we now have a very efficient system, one way or the other. There's basically a backdoor.
Well, they could run both booster stations, and they wouldn't even have to run the pumps very long.
Right. And that would allow us to fill all of our tanks almost simultaneously, too.
Yeah, yeah.
We wouldn't have to wait for Mountain to be full before they can fill Cox, and we can fill Northwoods. What I found out yesterday, the water treatment plant is currently running at about fifty percent capacity. And Mark thinks that there's room within the current building footprint to expand at another thirty percent on top of-
If we had to, if we had to.
So there's plenty of room for growth at the drinking water plant. What we have to do is a feasibility study to determine what the best way to approach all of this is, determine what our maximum growth is in, that we anticipate, so we know what our maximum demand is gonna be to determine what percentage of the plant we purchase, right? It all makes sense. In the meantime, if there's some infrastructure dollars that score you higher points for uh, combined projects, we should put that on the front burner, and then, we gotta do exactly what you were just, we were all just talking about, is where do we get the money from? Do we borrow the money? Do we take it out of our fixed asset accounts? Let's not shift around these generators, because these generators need to happen in twenty twenty-two, no matter what. The money is already earmarked in the reserves for both of these.
And you haven't spent it, right?
Nope.
He hasn't. We don't know if Kirk did. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
So, this first project here, then?
On which page is that now? Page sixteen?
I want to page it first.
We were on, we were on page sixteen.
Yeah.
What's the project?
Project is a motor control center. And so, and if you wanna even dovetail on that, the SCADA system, which was further back in the pages, page twenty-six out of fifty-nine, is also kind of part of that.
That would also be part of that discussion, because if we're running both systems as one system, they should be on one SCADA system. So that really determines what we do for our SCADA upgrades.
Right.
Because we want a system that the city gets as much information as they need, we get as much information as we need, so they have to communicate together, and we should be on the same system.
We tied together.
So we're all looking at the same information at the same time in real time.
And just, and just so you know, we wouldn't, this wouldn't happen for, um, the joint ownership of the water treatment plant. Probably wouldn't happen for a few years.
Yeah, we're talking probably a couple of years, just for the feasibility study and all of the other things. It's not to say that a capital improvement project won't pop up because of the new infrastructure dollars that are pouring out of Washington. We just might end up paying a fifty percent premium.
But I think, you know, you have, you have a favorable commission, uh, right now, and we move on this and get it as much secure as we can, because next year, they could have, they're gonna have two or three people up, and you know, things-
Well, we'll have Jenna for the mayor for a year or two, and then she goes back to-
But I think we should set the motion, so when our debt retirement is done for twenty twenty-four, five, we can just move into this other realm and be set to do it.
She's got three years. She just reran, but she's only mayor for the next year, for this year, and she's on board, so if we can get the basics of it.
Well, and we have a city manager that's got a really good head on her shoulders. She understands the finances, the, the benefits to working together. She understands that the regulatory agencies are pushing everyone to work together instead of being on an island by themselves. Everything's working in our favor, so long as the political issues remain at bay. If we go back to the Jerry Peterson days, anything's up in the air. Nothing against the guy, he just has a much more controversial way of doing things, you know?
Thank God.
Um, I did ask her if our two boards could meet this year, so they're gonna look at their schedules, too, and maybe this can be, you know, one of the things we throw out to get a progress report on or something.
Sean Hobbins said it won't be before March.
Right.
Just based on their current schedule.
But I look at it this way, what a wonderful uh, thing to show our residents that we're working together and securing water for us for the future.
And if it means we don't have to build infrastructure, that means you run several miles of pipe through the woods just to get it to the first customer?
Yeah, we don't have to do that. It's there.
Think about maintaining access to that wellhouse in the winter.
Be a fun snowmobile, right? Other than that, then wouldn't be fun getting back there.
Then we wouldn't need a snowmobile.
So this is funded already, this project?
We, it looks like Kirk had been keeping, started keeping money out a couple of years ago for this.
And we don't know how much or any.
Um, we can figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah, when we give you our summary, we will have that.
I think sixteen.
Page sixteen.
Which project?
I would-
It's the updated motor control electric.
That is on hold until we know what we're doing with the pump houses, because it'll probably be a much bigger project. We will just have some seed money towards it.
Yes, and then, uh, kinda as part of that, the SCADA upgrade, which is the SCADA upgrade for water and sewer, that's kinda, that's tied to the hip with that one there, too. So that would be on hold as well.
And what pa- what page?
Uh, page twenty-six, and it's under project SCADA upgrade on water and sewer.
So that'll be on hold also.
Yeah.
Okay.
And know that the SCADA project will be across both utilities, because we need to know what's going on on both. We don't want separate SCADA systems.
So the capital improvement money for the public works department comes out of the capital improvement money in their budget?
In the water and sewer funds.
Correct, so it's not funded by-
The general fund.
Correct.
Yes.
Just wanna make sure.
A couple of years ago, when we had to cover South Banden Moon, we increased the water volume rate ten cents, and we inclu- uh, increased the base rate a dollar. So because of that hiccup, we had to go to the people for more money.
Correct.
To all the people, not even the people that benefited from that whole thing.
Yeah, the whole township.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So that's the kinda stuff I'm talking about.
That's what you mean.
If we make the wrong, and it's gonna be our fault. I mean, we're gonna have to take the blame, not him.
Right.
For him.
Right.
It's our decision. We said, yep, we approved it, yep, gotta go do it.
Yeah. Well, there's a reason why we're being very careful with Oak Hills. Making sure that they understand it will be a special assessment for them.
Right.
Um, because current customers shouldn't pay for an expansion into their, into their-
They should be clear on that.
We've been very clear since our first meeting.
Grandview was the same way. They paid for it all.
And that, and that's where we got, got as much information we can, we're able to get, and we're trying to disseminate it to everybody so they can see what's, what we're doing, what we're, same information that we're looking at, so you also all understand what we're looking at in real time.
And, you know, Oak Hills could die on the vine tomorrow. Once we share these numbers, they might say there's only thirty percent of us that wanna go forward with the project. We can't even petition you to do it.
Correct.
Unless they figure out that we could do a percentage of it, but in order to even get up the hill, we need a booster station, and we're not gonna build a booster station for ten houses. We're gonna build it for the whole neighborhood and potential growth beyond it, if necessary, so.
Well, basically, if fifty percent of the people in that area don't approve of the petition, it's a dead issue for us.
Right. I, I think that one isn't, isn't a matter of if, it's more a matter of when. We'll see.
It just sounds like it's gonna be a hard sell.
It's hard to tell. It really depends who you talk to up there.
Depends who wants to sell their house.
Yeah.
You don't know yet.
That's very true. It's the only way they're gonna sell it.
We, when they did their, their survey, we, we got fifty-five percent came back that they were interested in seeing what the cost was, not, not necessarily that they were interested in hooking up.
And some of the people weren't available to even say where they stood, just on knowing what the cost was.
It's gonna be all the properties involved up there, so.
So we agreed that phase two is also on hold?
Yes.
Yes.
Which one is that now?
Phase two water project.
Uh, twenty-
Is it page twenty-five, maybe?
Twenty-five, yes.
Are there any other ones?
That'll be on hold, yes. We just kinda threw page twenty-four would be the north water sewer expansion. I just kinda put that on there more for educational, what, what could happen in the future, and that's still gonna be determined on a developer, so it's not-
And so the township wouldn't be really participating beyond normal staff resources anyway. We would be establishing specifications to which they would have to build it if they're going to expand their system.
And it's okay to have all these here, because then we have some history.
Yep.
I feel like it.
I, I think on Forestville, what I had laid out, looking at the overall plan, start laying that out, so we know what to look for in the future, and that. Right now, we just, we just got words here.
It's-
We don't have anything really looking at.
It's an area of potential future development, and we have to have it on the radar.
Right.
Yep.
But we need to lay out some basic plans down there, too.
I guess another one that I would put on hold for now, because it's not really a real important thing, it's, it would be nice if it happened, um, would be the water valve project that I had on there. And that was just adding a few extra valves in, like, Progers Park and stuff to help. I'm sorry, uh, page twenty-two.
Water valve project.
Well, that's a cheap project.
Yeah. I mean, it would, it would be nice if we could do it. It's not an absolute need.
I think in twenty twenty-two, we have bigger priorities, that that one's gonna get put on hold for a little bit.
So then, I guess we can just start-
Get back to hydrant replacements.
Yes.
And that you move from somewhere into this.
So, last year, we had a bunch of hydrants in the operating budget that we knew were capital replacements tied to the highway project, Ontario project. And it really chews into your operating fund, what you can accomplish with the staff you here, have here during each year, right? It limits what else you can do, because you're doing capital replacements with what should be your operating budget. You need to be doing capital replacements with your fixed asset funds.
So it's just a, it's just how you look at it.
Well, yeah, it's either coming out of the money that you're bringing in that year, or it's coming out of the money that you have in the bank. That's the difference. And for a small amount of them, I think you can get away with that. You just have to tighten your budget on other aspects of the system, right? If you're planning to chip away doing ten to twenty hydrants a year, hiring a contractor to do that, now you're getting into the fixed asset account. It's not operations anymore. So that's the difference in philosophy on this particular request. And probably repeating, moving forward to the extent that we can.
So how many do we have altogether? How many hydrants altogether?
Oh, I just, I just looked at the number. I wanna say about three or four hundred, somewhere in that area.
And over ten years, everyone should be replaced?
I would hope to get as many done as possible.
So thirty to forty per year?
Hydrants per year? No, I would say maybe ten, ten hydrants per year. Just keep working on it.
So how long do they last for? Twenty years?
Twenty years, for sure.
Twenty years, okay.
Yeah, and I think I have fifty years on this, because that's what-
So it would be fifteen then. If you have three hundred, it would be fifteen per year.
Uh, yeah, it'd be a hundred, a hundred every ten years.
So here's the thing. A lot of the hydrants in our system are newer East Jordan hydrants. We're not gonna get to those for a decade, at the earliest.
But we need to have a replacement plan with a number and say, these are the ones earmarked to be done.
Yeah, and I, and I would be looking at the ones that are nineteen seventy-four. To start off on those ones are the ones that are
Fifty years old.
Yeah, the oldest ones.
So ten, ten to fifteen per year.
Yeah, ten is probably a safe number to start.
And that would be ninety-five thousand.
That's an, that's an approximate. Um, I-
We might get the bids back from the contractors, and we'll be able to do eight, right?
Maybe, or maybe we'll put more money in it.
There you go.
Yeah, so what I did is I took a hydrant that we knew we had replaced and how much it costs, and just kinda figured it out based on that. But it could, it all depends on, like, what John said, what the contractor comes back with, with the bid.
So this is the contractor and the equipment?
Yes.
It's the entire cost.
The package.
Yep.
Package.
What would be the cost if, if we had the equipment to do it ourselves?
Well, the cost would probably be very similar. It's just the labor costs wouldn't be itemized towards that. It would be in, the labor costs would be in your operate. We've been doing it that way. The problem is to do ten a year, it really ties up our guys from doing their normal preventive maintenance, so.
Well, I'm thinking if we hired another person, and, you know, which, which-
Um, I think, well, in that case, we would have to start looking at different equipment, too, because some of them are easier than others, so you, you might get into a situation where you need excavator and dump truck and stuff, which we don't have, so.
Just easier for them to do it.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking down the road, if we had the equipment, if we had an excavator, and we could do it ourselves, then is it gonna be more proactive to do it that way in the long run?
You have to look at-
I would say on fifty percent of the hydrants we have, we can do them ourselves and just pick away at them, right? And that would actually go back to the operating fund. When we have a list of ten to twenty to thirty that we just know are bigger than we're capable of with what we have, it's gonna be cheaper to hire those ones out to a contractor. So Lenny will prepare a map, give it to the contractors and say, how many of these can you do for our budget? That's probably the way we would do it, is whoever comes back with the most number in the most strategically located spots is gonna get the bid. So it's a little bit of a reverse.
So do we have any money set into the, that, those budgets that you talked about to do this?
There's no money set aside yet, but earmarked for it, I should say. Fixed assets, that's what this is. Fixed asset replacement.
Yep.
So that would be where the money comes from.
And how much money is in fixed assets?
Well, I'd have to get it from Lois.
So that's always my question. Do we have enough money, and will there always be enough money, and blah, blah, blah?
No, but remember, we're capitalized. This is the capital improvement plan, and we're amortizing it. We're not necessarily-
Not for ninety-five, it's gonna cost ninety-five thousand a year.
But I mean, I'm, you gotta look at the whole picture. This is not just the budget we're looking at.
That's an approximate, yes.
Ninety-five thousand per year, so that one ninety is, makes no sense on the bottom.
No, the nineteen hundred is wrong.
Yeah.
Because he, he did it for fifty years, there should be more pages.
Well, no.
So this part is wrong.
Well, and also, if you're doing, if you're doing a replacement over fifty years, you're gonna put all four hundred fire hydrants in there, and that number gets a lot bigger.
Yeah, yeah, and it's gonna cost them more money every year.
Lenny, what did the Woodridge cost you? You know Alpan?
Uh, that one I do not know, Alpan. We did that one ourselves. Uh, but we did contract one out, let's say, up at the Northwoods tank, when we put that one in there, and that was about ninety-five hundred.
So ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But that was a hard one, though.
Right, so that was a little bit kinda weird during that one, but-
So this money would come out of some money that we have in there, and how do we get money into that fund?
So at, at the end of the year, whatever you don't spend of, of the revenues you took in, goes into the reserves.
So we'll, we'll cut it out.
But there's two ways to do that. One, you fund your depreciation at the end of the year, of your system. So you're paying for the amount of aging that occurred over that year. So the depreciation is funding your fixed asset replacement account. The other way, you put money into your replacement and improvement lines in the operating fund, which actually comes out of your current year revenues, and if you don't spend it that year, it goes in the bank earmarked for whatever you choose it to do.
So how do we do it here today?
We're already doing it in the budget. I will tell you, though, in the twenty twenty-two budget, this'll save us some conversation on Tuesday night. I increased Lenny's replacement and improvement lines to match the current year. Because the CIP process was not done yet, I didn't want a number in there smaller than last year, because I'm assuming we're gonna actually spend a bunch of money next year.
Cause we didn't spend any this year.
The last couple of years, we haven't done a whole lot, because of our transition.
So we have lots of money in the armors.
And you're gonna see a budget amendment next week for, our sales were really good in water. We have a excess in revenue. It's gonna-
Can we lower their rates?
No, no, don't go there.
I, I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend lowering the rates.
Oh, yeah, I don't ever recommend lowering.
What we need to do is convince people that we're gonna keep the rates as flat as we can for as long as we can, so we don't have to give you a big whack down the road, right? We'd rather do it in nickel or quarter increments than dollar, or five dollar increments.
So everybody's staff supports this ninety-five thousand for this year?
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to see it get started this year. I mean, it's better to get it started versus waiting on it, because we have so many that we're gonna eventually do here.
So Willie, every year we'll put ninety-five thousand to that.
Ideally, that will be the plan, knowing that things can change and sometimes we have to reprioritize that ninety-five to do something else.
Oh, sure, but that's how life is.
Right.
We might turn the page and decide ninety-five, we can't spend next year on hydrants because we have a roof we gotta fix.
Well, we'll, let's talk about that. Let's talk about that roof.
Residents are fine when you say we're not going to touch the rates. They're fine.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
But right now, that is a twenty twenty-two and you'll probably see it again next year for twenty twenty-three. You might see it five years in a row until Lenny says, we're good with hydrants for a while.
Well, but it never hurts to have that money there for the hydrants.
And I mean, this isn't, like John said before, some of our hydrants are already relatively new. So this is, we're just going to start focusing on the nineteen seventy-three, four, five ones here.
We didn't get to the roof next.
You're right. But this one, I think.
You got to the one I like.
You want to go to the, next one on the list is the hydro excavator.
Yeah.
And that's a needed, and that's going to be a needed piece of the question.
Yes. So this one is going back to the service line verification. Yeah, page eighteen. Uh, I did call and get a, a number if we were to contract that out, that out, and that's going to be around a hundred thousand dollars right now. Knowing that it could go up by ten percent next year depending on demand. So, uh, between hydro excavators and contractors who do this type of work are going to be in very heavy demand in the state of Michigan here in the next few years.
Is there money in the government grants?
Maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
Can we spend the money coming from the COVID funds for this? Maybe.
ARPA funds, yes.
Okay, so we could.
We have multiple opportunities next year to pay for this one because water infrastructure is one of the four categories for ARPA funds.
I saw that.
You are.
We haven't had that discussion about what to do with the ARPA money yet.
You brought up three or four different expenses that we could put against. So I don't know how big that pot's getting to be.
It's four hundred thousand dollars. But then there's infrastructure money that will be coming for lead copper service lines. And that's what this specific item is for, is to identify. Lenny's got exposed two hundred and thirty.
Yep.
Service lines randomly selected by Excel formula.
Within how, what, what's the timeframe for two thirty?
Five years.
Five years, but I think we're, we're, we used up about half of our year here now. So we're about four and a half years now.
And the state government had some money for this too, I thought.
Well, there's a whole bunch of money. We don't know. I'm hoping we commit to this no matter how we pay for it. And if we were going to pay for it out of our water funds that we currently have and we get grant money to pay for it instead, we're that much better off, right? So I think this should be a twenty twenty-two project.
So this is a star do it. Do you want to put it at a hundred thousand then?
Um, I, well, the initial quote that we received was around eighty-five thousand, but he said that could be, you know, like everything else could go up ten percent too.
Could go down.
I, I don't think it's going to. I wish it would.
Can we rent it out to the other people?
That's possibility. I mean, a lot of people are going to be looking for them.
We could potentially find ways with other municipalities to see additional benefit down the road.
Partnerships.
But we're thinking in the first five years, we're going to be pretty selfish with it.
Till we're done.
So there'll be staff money going into doing this or that'll be part of your?
That's in the operating budget.
Right.
Okay, alright.
So going back to Dan's question about us replacing hydrants on our own, the next five years, we might be doing this. And that might be all of our spare time for the summer.
Right.
I can tell you where you want to go. I know where all the copper lines are.
So the funny thing is, we have more galvanized pipe in our system than we ever thought we would. And I'll tell you why. Maybe Lenny can. Lenny should. It's his, his department.
Well, there was a lot of wells, a lot of private wells.
Yes, there was.
And they, and they just hooked up the copper line to the current galvanized line that was there. Unfortunately, if we cannot prove that there, that that was never connected to any kind of lead fitting or if we can't prove it, which is going to be impossible to do, we have to replace a whole line all the way from the main to inside the house. Eighteen inches, I would think, inside the house. So we have found some galvanized lines, especially in some of the older houses, that were connected to private wells out in the front yard or the backyard. And once we find that, it's, we have to replace it.
We're replacing it to the curb stop for sure.
Yep.
We already did one last, last year on Ontario.
Well, that would be your street to cover.
And there are some on Fair Avenue too, that we know that are galvanized.
The old homes on Fair Avenue.
That are galvanized.
Up on the west end.
Yep, yep. So we, we do know that there's some galvanized lines or just from when we had the freeze ups and stuff, we came across a lot of them, so. Yeah, that's, when you can't prove that it never was hooked up to lead, that's the kind of the trigger.
My dad used to have a well.
We all had wells.
On Fair Avenue, right, right across the hill.
I don't think they hooked it to the well. I think they ran the line up.
Right directly up. That's, that's what my recollection was too.
So if we find copper in the house and copper on both sides of the curb stop, we don't have to do anything more. We fill in the hole and away we go. If we find galvanized at any of those positions, we have to replace it.
I guess full copper.
So we're starring this and moving on to the next one?
Can I figure out what that costs to do it all?
Is everyone okay with, with us moving forward with the intention of purchasing this that we get to keep when we're done and not send back to wherever the contractor came from?
Yeah.
And you're expecting seven years? You're thinking seven or eight years to do roughly eighty, ninety thousand, right?
No.
Because the amortization here is for ten years.
Don't look at the amortization on that one.
That's why I'm clarifying.
This is what, this is a one-year expense and then it's going to be operating fund expenditures for the next five.
Right.
So sewer and water would split that hundred thousand dollar expenditure mix.
They'd each take fifty out of their magic.
Yep.
And possibly a revenue generator after that.
Possibly. I wouldn't put a whole lot in that, but it's possible.
That possibility is there, yeah.
But with the, having the piece of equipment too, then that was, we could use it for other things or two that, you know, for other.
We're not, it, we're going to be more self-sufficient, which I think we have to because.
I'd like to see that, you know.
Yep.
I hate it when we have to contract too, too much stuff out.
And we were actually just talking about that yesterday, that we're going to have to start becoming more self-sufficient, a lot of things just because there's availability of people and companies.
You're relying on them. You're at their mercy.
Yep. I mean, some people we have to rely on out of Detroit, Detroit area and it's like pulling Keith to get him up here to help you, so.
So.
We have six more of these in twenty minutes.
Can't go faster.
Bingo.
So we need to figure out, do we need to go through the strategic plan?
Not today.
Do we need to? Do you feel comfortable enough with it? Do we need to approve it maybe in January? We don't have to do it right now. It's what I'm trying to get a consensus. Not necessarily pass it right now or is it okay?
I don't have a problem with it because we vetted it pretty well at, at the meeting.
I think we can do it in January.
Put it on the first January agenda?
Yes. Probably take a look at it. The formula to look at.
I think the CIP is a more important before the budget. So let's, let's press on.
Which one's next?
This one's kind of out of order. Uh, it's page nineteen. It's out of order because it's more of a building and grounds thing versus, uh, public works. But this one was for a commercial forty-eight inch zero turn lawnmower. Uh, right now, what they're using is just a regular.
It's a residential lawn tractor, John Deere.
I thought they bought a new one of these last year.
No, we bought a front end loader last year.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought we bought a zero turn. We talked about it.
We didn't buy one though.
It's, it's terribly needed.
Yeah.
I mean, it, I, I guess I was under the assumption that.
I'm going to suggest that that budget's not going to be accurate either. You might have gotten a budget number from somebody, but with this whole supply chain issue, you can add five thousand to that just to be safe. But it would be, I think, two different cost centers in the general fund, building and grounds and recreation. Which means you have two different revenue streams. It's up to the board to decide if you want to spend any of that recreation money on equipment to maintain our current recreation facilities.
I mean, that's part, that, that's a cost that you have to address.
Yeah.
The millage language was written vague enough that we can do just about anything relative to recreation. But I want you to all be aware, if we're going to spend recreation millage money on equipment to maintain our facilities, that everyone knows when the taxpayers ask, that's how we're spending some that we're not using on operations.
Well, the recreation has to be maintained.
That's recreational.
How much of it?
Yeah, they got to do.
Half a half.
Building and grounds around here, but that's.
Is the use going to be half and half?
Yes.
For the whole year?
Yes.
Okay, so half of the usage, not, I'm not talking about how it's being paid, the usage itself. If we're going to use the, the recreation funds for what, four months? And we're using building and grounds for months, is it literally half and half?
I think it's, it's apples to apples fifty percent because the season is the same for cutting grass here versus Lions Field.
Okay, and they have to do it about the same amount of time.
So when those fields are rented, can some of that money go back to help fund? Where does that rented money go?
We don't have any rented money currently.
That's, yeah, we need to have those contracts and another discussion on those.
So people don't rent that pavilion?
We have two agreements in place and those agreements were written where they provided in-kind services upfront.
Yeah, I saw that.
And one of them is expired. The other one automatically renews annually unless somebody chooses not to.
But when they rent the pavilion over there for a family event, where does that money go?
Uh, probably the general fund.
So the general.
Almost every revenue we get, if it's not sewer and water or garbage bills, will go in the general fund.
So some money could pay well.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you're getting into pennies on the, on the dollar here, but yeah.
Well, maybe those contracts will help pay.
It all depends where the, where they go, yeah.
To get back to this one, this is definitely needed.
I think so.
That little, that little riding lawnmower that they got is.
And it beats them up pretty good.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the time, the timeframe that they're gonna, the time, just using it to cut.
How much time do you think they'll save?
They'll save hours, hours.
Yeah. They'll be able to like knock the stuff out in no time.
People will cut Lions Field.
They could save themselves a day a week. Yeah. Over the course of the summer on average.
In the dollar amount, that's, that's quite a few dollars all of a sudden that too.
We got it versus a cut radius like this all the way out like that. So it saves a lot of time on the, like Lions Field.
Do they cut along the walking paths too?
Uh, sometimes they'll get on the corners and stuff here. They'll do some of that stuff, but.
So this would be better for them?
Maybe not, uh, maybe, uh.
They could still use the other one too.
Yeah, and we still have the other one. It, it's really going to help in places like this where you got to get into the corners instead of jumping off and getting the push lawnmower or the weed whacker or something like that. They'll be able to get in there and get it all done.
And it's going to give you big production on like the softball field.
So we like this one?
Uh, yes.
So are you thinking fifteen thousand? Are you going to?
Um, that's, that's probably, that's probably a good number.
And it's just a one-time purchase, not ever.
And you have the dollars associated with that.
Recreation could pay, pay for it by itself out of excess, um, millage revenue. Because I think we're only spending about half of it. Remember, we, we picked a millage rate for two years, knowing that it wasn't completely defined yet. And the voters approved it. What we can probably do is take that excess and go another two years without having to renew it.
But we have to, we have to show them some things for the mill, for recreation.
This would be a perfect example, um, a high-quality, efficient lawnmower.
Yeah, I agree. Safety, talk about employee safety.
Okay.
Definitely on the backs.
That's an easy sell there.
Here's, here's the one you might not like. Yeah, page twenty. Uh, this is the Public Works facility roof. Um, as a lot of you have known, uh, last, about two years ago, the whole roof was compromised with snow and ice and everything up there. So we actually got, uh, you can see the beams kind of twisting and everything was kind of, uh, knit, looked very good up there. We had to get out of the building there for a few days. Uh, we did have an analysis done on the structural analysis and it, the iron was compromised. So right now, basically our workaround to, to keep everything safe over there is when we get more than six inches of snow, we're up on the roof shoveling. So we have some, uh, snow blowers permanently stationed on the roof and we got shovels in the winter time. So we're up there.
My son's house was like.
Shoveling. So this is kind of a, a safety issue. I mean, six inches is not very much.
No.
And, uh, when you're kind of sitting there, you can see all the panels and stuff start moving around and you can actually watch things moving by the minute. It's a little disconcerting when you're sitting there.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask.
Well, that's, that's the thing. That was kind of be, before John and I, I don't, we, we don't know. It was never filed.
There was never a claim filed?
No.
How old is the roof?
Well, it's the original firewall. It's the original roof. So it's the roof.
Insurance on it though.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So Lenny and I were just talking about this this afternoon. We can file a claim now and see what happens, right? I mean, what's the worst that can happen? They deny it. Or they can say, you've missed the statute of limitations. You knew about this two years ago and you had a hundred and eighty days or whatever the case may be. Or they can say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna cover this. Um, you pay your deductible and then you're going to see it in your premiums moving forward because this is a big claim.
Well, yeah, but it's one way or another. You're, you're going to pay either by paying three hundred thousand dollars or you're gonna over time continue to.
And we don't know if it's going to be three hundred or five hundred yet because they're going to probably have to do a partial tear off over the office part of the building. Because they can't get the additional beams in and up from inside. So they have to take the roof off to get the steel in and then put the roof back on.
So they're not doing that till next year? They wouldn't even do that?
Well, we're, we're still waiting on, getting some information back from, uh, our engineer and stuff to see what, exactly what, what kind of project, what has to be done there. We just know that it was compromised. They did the analysis on it and.
So it's kind of a hold, hold and wait for information.
I wouldn't say hold. I think it needs to be a priority.
Yeah.
I'd start with the insurance company.
Right.
Well, we can approve this unless you want to say five hundred thousand. It's up to you. I mean, we have to put it in the budget somehow.
Where are you going to get the money from?
Remember that whole fixed asset discussion we had?
Yeah.
And reprioritizing funds?
Go to the bank. So we've got the insurance company, the bank or the fixed asset account.
The, the building is part of our fixed assets.
Yeah, and the fire department sold the building.
I've heard Public Works employees say they own a polished turd, but.
Well.
That's recorded unfortunately. That's, that's just, it's a building that was built in the nineteen seventies, you know, so.
Can you approach the insurance company and try that, uh, that avenue first and see if, if possible? I would rather go that route and then like Linda was saying, you know, pay, if you got to pay an extra ten thousand dollars a year for that insurance, it's still going to hopefully save us money in the long run and we don't have to come up with it right now.
Well, hopefully we're spending money that's already been spent, right? Paying our insurance premiums if it goes that way.
You want to leave it at three hundred thousand?
I would, I would probably go a little higher just to be safe. I, yeah.
I think you need to look at and come back with an estimated number of that.
But we have to approve the CIP.
Yeah.
Go, go with it. Yeah, we have to have a number.
We're waiting on that opinion of probable cost based on the updated information, knowing that they're going to have to do a partial roof tear off. And when Lenny gets that, we'll get back to you.
But it has to be done next year. It's a safety issue. It has to be done.
To the extent that we can get a contractor.
It has to be done, period.
Right.
Are, are you going to have anything different for numbers by Thursday from the packet or is this what we're going to go with?
I, I, we did talk to Matt, uh, last week. He said he was still working on getting us the numbers. We can try to get ahold of him and.
I wouldn't hold your breath for the next packet, but we'll try.
Yeah.
So we'll approve it roughly at four hundred thousand. Okay.
I would approve it at five hundred.
That's what I wrote down. I thought.
I'd approve it at five hundred.
Let's go five, just in case.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to figure out.
I mean, what happens if you gotta, if you gotta do the whole roof?
We know we have some play in the budget.
Well, and keep in mind again, this is split fifty-fifty between water and sewer utilities. So you have two fixed asset accounts to hold from.
Well, the roof's never been replaced, so.
What's next?
Uh, we are at a truck for water and sewer, so page twenty-one. I know Pete would like this one. He likes nice trucks.
Nice looking.
Nice looking trucks.
Not rusty.
I'd like to see it not for a long.
And, and I, and I totally agree. Uh, so our.
Don't you have this in the budget already?
Was for, I think was in that one was for building and grounds purchasing.
Okay.
That's this year.
Yeah.
Pick up for the fire department.
Oh, building and grounds was purchasing it?
Yes. So this would be for Public Works. So this would be for water and sewer. So, uh, our fleet is kind of, we have a vast age, uh, all the way from I think like two thousand five up until, I don't know what I had down, twenty, two thousand sixteen, no, it was twenty nineteen.
Nineteen was the last one.
Yeah. Uh, with a lot of the other ones are kind of in the middle. So, yeah, we're kind of getting to the point where we should start rotating the older ones out and getting new ones. You know, we're starting to run into some issues where like wheel bearings and stuff will go in those, you know. Who knows how much those could be, a couple thousand dollars at a crack. So we want to get away from putting a lot of work into these older vehicles to keep them going putting a lot of work into these older vehicles to keep them going and just kinda keep the schedule going.
What's the mileage estimation on most of those older ones?
Um, not as high as you would think, uh, I, I don't know offhand, but they're-
Well, there's a ton of hours idling too.
Yeah.
So you get a lot of that stuff. In the winter, they're idling and I'm-
They're older than the odometer says for sure.
Yeah. And of course they're work trucks, so sometimes, you know, you throw a pipe or something in the back, you might get them dented up and it just starts causing rust and that kinda stuff to you, so-
That plow truck that your dad bought a couple of years ago, that one probably had sixty-something thousand miles.
A lot of idle hours, so in the bodies, they rust out, they're rusting out.
Yeah, but like Pete's always said, it doesn't, get some sandpaper and kinda work on them a little bit. You're not gonna replace a whole fender, I mean, unless it's really bad and less than cars do.
Can we get a board decision on that? Does the board want Public Works, uh, doing paint jobs on pickup trucks?
No.
Not a paint job.
No, if they get a, a low day or something like that, just schedule somebody to do it for a couple hours, three, four hours.
Just to, just to keep it clean.
Yeah, labor management, if you just-
Vacuum it out and, you know.
Yeah, doing the preventive maintenance so you don't get to that bucket of rust makes perfect sense.
And the, I mean, the one truck, I think one of our trucks that probably is the most rusty, it's a two thousand eight. So I mean, that's, it's even up there in age itself.
And I would think they would have a little bit of time and the, the fire guys have, there's only three employees there, they have time to keep those trucks washed up pretty good.
Well, we've only really had, a lot of these trucks have lived their life outside though too, because, I mean, we only-
Until now.
Till now, till we have the, the new building, so some, a lot of these trucks, even that two thousand eight, lived some of its life, you know, they even parked it outside. And we didn't really have a facility to keep them clean, so hopefully with the, as we start getting newer ones, we got, we do got a place to clean them and they do, they do wash them down like twice a week. They get dirty right away again, but I mean, we try to keep them clean.
I think the price is gonna go down, I think there'll be, should be some pretty good deals if you get all those chips for them because they got parked a lot of full trucks.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think I put between fifteen, sixty thousand on there, uh, this one I had fifty thousand on, but that was just kinda an estimate.
So you want to buy that this year?
I would hope to start that-
Twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, start going through them. Seeing as where we're, like I said, our oldest one is a two thousand-
Come on!
So, um, so there's money in that half, that money would come out of each budget.
Correct, and we have money in both replacement and improvement lines in both budgets. Some of it has not been accounted for.
So it's really replaced, you're really replacing stuff.
That would be a replacement in this case, correct. That being said, when we tally all of these up when we're done here today, if some of it has to come out of the fixed asset fund, then we'll have to let you know on those. And you're gonna find out when we go to make the purchase anyway, because it's gonna come back to you, um-
And then that frees up budget money.
Well, we don't do it.
Can any of this come onto that statewide, uh, pool or, you know, where you can go in and buy vehicles?
Oh, my deals, that's one of the options we'll look at, yeah.
And actually back to the hydro excavator too, that could also be, I, he didn't, I mean, he didn't call it my deals, but it was something similar to that.
Yeah, so not every manufacturer is, has a contract in the my deals program, so they have other, like federal purchasing programs which'll give you the same kinda discount. It means we have to pay a seventy-five dollar membership and we save five thousand dollars or whatever, so it's worth it.
You used to get computers.
I think you only got one left here.
So the, the one more, I actually forgot to put this one on my prioritization list here, but, um, this is one that we're not really quite sure of yet, this is a utility relocation and that's in conjunction with the MPS project. Um, we, we're anticipating that some of the utilities might have to be relocated for the culverts, move them around and stuff, but we don't know exactly.
Backyard Creek.
Yeah.
What?
The one we got the grant for.
Backyard Creek, we got a, we got a non-point source grant to replace four culverts in Trowbridge Park. Starting at Montgomery going down to Huron. If for the replacement of these four culverts, the water or sewer needs to be replaced and they don't allow that to be a participating cost for the grant money, then we will have to pay for it. So this needs to be kept on the radar. I think you can call it a hold because we don't know yet if, if the utilities will have to pay for it.
What page is that, Lenny?
Uh, page twenty-three. And we're starting, we're gonna start getting more information about this project, we're, we're kinda sort of that process, so hopefully-
We're holding for more information.
We kinda skipped all the ones in the front.
No.
That'd be good.
Which ones you have, Lenny?
The ref.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's right.
No, I've got generator at the pump house.
Oh.
Well, that has to be done.
That's already paid for.
Yeah, you have to result.
We did?
Yep, that's when you went to talk to Lois.
Oh, yeah, that wasn't very nice.
There's two generators in there, Center Street and Cox.
Paid for already.
They're paid for to the extent that we originally budgeted, we don't know if they're paid for to the extent that it's gonna cost us.
Right. We're gonna find that also then.
That generator's been on the top of that list.
Forever?
Since I've been here.
Okay, so now we got the law preparation.
And then I had the, the Center Street lift, lift station, that was probably while I was gone.
Yes, and that one also, we do have twenty-five thousand dollar grant for that one too, to help with the engineering and stuff of that too.
So you're leaving a hundred in there for the CIP?
Yeah, uh, yes, because we don't know what the true cost is gonna be. Everything kinda went up.
Inflationary pricing. Okay, so back to the front?
Yeah.
All right.
But it's like everything is phono.
The first one, I think Jason put in here, an ADA compliant wheelchair swing, which I think would be a really nice thing to have. Especially if we could do it for five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna do it for five thousand.
To do it, yeah.
Last I saw was twenty-three to twenty-five thousand.
I talked to, Lenny, were you with me when we met with, um, the guy from Landscape Structures?
Yes.
What did he say, fifty thousand to do it right?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I remember.
So I think it's a really nice project to be considering, I would suggest that we put it on hold for now. Maybe we push it to twenty twenty-three, but until we get a really solid number on what that's gonna be, here's the other thing. Material availability. Anything that these guys make, you're, you're talking another eight-month delay just to get it. So twenty twenty-three might be a perfect year for it and we change it to a fifty thousand dollar budget. That won't require we do a budget amendment in the general fund. And I think-
I'll also look at this, I've seen a couple of them and that. And they're fantastic, I've seen, I gave you information. But we put something in there, we're gonna have to have cameras to protect it. Because with some of the things we've had at Lions Field and that, we're gonna have to protect it as much as we can.
Vandalism.
Vandalism.
So it's not gonna protect it from vandalism, it's gonna tell you who did it so you can go after them.
Right.
And these days, you're not gonna really get anything in return other than the satisfaction of saying we caught ya.
Well, and the-
You can't go after, if it's a, a youth, you can't go after the parents for banalizing something?
Well, you can, but, but even then, the, the prosecutor's gonna, uh, plead it down to something where you get a quarter of what you should. And I can tell you, I saw this happen. We had a kid, it was a recycled plastic picnic table in Ishbaming, paid for with grant money. He thought it would be cool to hacksaw part of the top off the picnic table and burn part of the rest of it. We went and found the exact replacement materials we needed and the prosecutor said, you can do that for a quarter of that price, that's what we're giving you.
That's what's wrong with this whole system today.
You're right.
That's what's wrong.
Well, a wheelchair swing will be used by all, everyone, so you have to buy one that everyone can use as well as a wheelchair person.
Right, right.
So I, I think there-
There's a, there's a lot-
There's a lot to it.
To get to the wheelchair swing, there's a lot you have to do, preparing the ground, everything, and to get a-
Right, yeah, it's a lot.
ADA compliant to it.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully, um-
Does everyone agree, twenty twenty-three, fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Or at least put it on, yeah, maybe. Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with it.
And I think I would hold.
And I think the rest, rest of these, John, on those pickleball, disco and the soccer fields are gonna be put on hold depending on what happens with that property over there.
I would say for sure.
Well, and they're all twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so that, that would be on hold, so.
So somehow the department heads have to, we, we need to have a CIP conference.
Just for, for next, just the year.
Right, right, how to fill it out.
Well, I can tell you, you already explained a different expectation than I had personally.
Right.
Anytime I've ever done a CIP, you're, you're focusing first on the next five years.
Not the next year.
Not just the budget.
Yeah.
Well, that's where your amortization comes in. It's when do you start funding it? If you're putting it in the twenty-two budget, that's when you start to fund it.
I know, but the whole process we just did, we basically looked at next year.
Right, we did, but we kept on-
We're four years behind.
Because the stuff he needs, he needs to not amortize it, he wants to do it and pay it and buy it now. If he had a two hundred thousand dollar project, we might have to do it next year, but we're funding it for five years. There's a difference.
See, I agree, I agree. It's, it's been out like this, it's like a strategic plan. Your performance improvement activities stretch a lo, a long time, but you build that from your strategic plan.
Any CIP process I've ever been through, you have a five-year CIP and a twenty-year CIP. And generally speaking, once you get past five years, you're looking at five-year increments after that up to twenty. So we would need all day to go through this, a true CIP. I understand the urgency to get next year's CIP done for the sake of the budget, but I can tell you, we're not gonna get the budget wrapped up by Thursday with all of the modifications and the appropriations act and everything to, to accommodate everything we just talked about. Some of that's gonna be a budget amendment and some of it's gonna be reprioritization because we don't have as much funding as we said we wanted to have. And let's keep in mind, approving a CIP and budgeting for it are always two separate processes anyway. We can say we're gonna do two hundred thousand dollars worth of CIP projects next year, but go and do the budget and fund none of them. That means they don't happen. Cause the budget always takes priority over the CIP.
So maybe the CIP needs to be at the planning commission in February or March and then we need to have it so in July we can look at this and then the budget is after the CIP.
We're gonna finish this process and almost turn around and go right back to the planning commission.
And start all over, right, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, well, and you know, maybe that's the way to do it and to do it for five years out, you know, and this year we wanna do this and, and you, all of this can change.
It's all through it because the next three, four years, it's all gonna be, you'll be operating never like it did before.
It's a plan.
It's all gonna change because your damn, uh, demand on thing and your money on that.
Well, and look at housing.
And the supply too, it's gonna be iffy.
So the city turned down the proposed housing project, okay? Do you know where that housing's gonna go next? It's coming to tro, it's coming to the township, you watched.
Well, the township has more options for them.
Yeah, you watched, they want affordable housing, it's gonna move out to, so we should be proactive. Let's tell them, we have some opportunities, we have some-
Well, there's already a couple of fairly big housing developments under the radar at this point that we're just kinda waiting for those developers to act on.
And they want affordable housing, so they want condos and apartments and townhouses, that's what the city's been talking about, affordable. That's maybe affordable, I'm not sure if any of it's affordable.
It's affordable anymore.
Right, but they, well, we had a discussion about that.
Three to six hundred thousand dollars.
But they don't want, yeah, they want things people just starting out can buy.
Mm-hmm.
Right across from the park.
And the problem is you can't build them for what they can afford to pay.
Yeah, I agree, Lynn, something has to change.
We've already had these discussions with some of the city people and Q pad and the partnership and it's, it's not going away, they're still gonna be talking about it, we have more meetings.
But we haven't been part of those discussions.
No, I know, but we don't have anything to bring you yet.
Right.
It's just been basic.
I did see, yeah, that they're gonna have some more of those meetings. I think they're open to the public, right?
So to move us off-center, I'll just move, uh, make a motion that we approve the, uh, CIP for twenty twenty-two.
Approve what we discussed?
Let me ask something first though.
Do you need a, a second in order to discuss it or not?
You do.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a second. What numbers do you have in the budget in relation to everything we just talked about?
We have to go back and verify that we're even close.
So all of the holds and the taking off are act, are, will affect the budget? You have, you have all these numbers in here?
It means, no, no. The CIP was done before the majority of the budget. No, the, the majority of the budget was done before the CIP got to this point.
Okay.
So the water fund, I think in particular, we might have started with fifteen thousand dollars in replacements and improvements. I jumped one of them up to almost a hundred and seventy thousand and the other one to, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, it was over two hundred thousand between those two. So I think the water fund, we're probably gonna be good and, and we can probably reduce those numbers depending on the roof. The roof is the big question mark yet, we don't, we don't have a good opinion of probable cost on it. Wastewater, we might be good, but I feel like some of the stuff in there was final payments, maybe like on Center Street Lift Station, that kinda thing. We have to go back and look at it all now.
So basically, I guess then Lenny, we have the hydrants, right?
Yep.
And the trailer, we're gonna do that one.
The trailer, the-
The hydro-
Hydro excavator, okay, yep.
Um-
And the road.
A lot more.
Building and grounds.
A lot more.
That's building and grounds and rap.
All right, that's fine, building and grounds, was that in the budget? Did you put budget debt?
I don't recall.
Okay. And then the roof repair, right, and the truck and the Center Street Lift Station.
Yep.
Yep.
Those are the only ones, so some of those, half and half, some might be in there and some might not.
And the fire department didn't have anything?
Ended up with three?
Well, they have the fire truck.
Yeah.
But that's already paid, that's not even in-
No, they're, they're short a hundred thousand.
Well, they don't know yet, they're just starting.
That's why I would say, fire department doesn't have anything, right?
Okay. There's stuff that's being funded and firing.
So there won't be any, if, if we approved the budget as it's currently presented, we wouldn't have any budget amendments for CIP and the fire fund. And we're gonna do everything we can to minimize any budget amendments you would have to do in the general fund, water and wastewater funds.
And those would be done in J- January after the budget's approved.
Right. We might go and look at all of the stuff that we just discussed and realize that the majority of it would be coming out of the reserves anyway. So when we come back to you with a breakdown of what the reserves are for, it's gonna have specific items in this twenty twenty-two CIP that are now earmarked that weren't two hours ago.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Even though we didn't have it prepared two hours ago.
Well, that's what I'm just wondering, when are we gonna approve the budget? Are we gonna do it the next meeting or the last meeting?
Scheduled for next meeting.
It has to be next meeting.
Yeah.
It's on the-
It's on the next agenda. And keep in mind, the agenda as presented, or the budget as presented, we haven't agreed to either bargaining unit contracts either. We have a tentative agreement with one, the other one hasn't even responded to us yet. They said, what's the hurry?
Yeah, and actually we have a memo or I have an email from them in June or July that says, we'd like to get going on this right away.
We've got only budget what we know.
Sorry, we're doing that.
That's all we can do.
No, we still, we're still in open session.
So what I wanna know is, we're, what are we approving? If we're gonna put this in the budget, we don't have real numbers, you wanna go, we're, you want to approve Tuesday night-
CIP is one process, budget is a separate process.
Right, but this, if these are all fixed assets, they're not gonna affect the budget. So I'm trying to figure out if some of these are gonna be in the budget.
Yeah.
Cause we're gonna approve them this blindly, basically.
This'll be amendments to the budget. We have to approve the budget as it is, these'll come through as amendment, amendments to the budget.
You'll amend the budget as, when they look at all the numbers of the CIP, they'll know how it'll affect the budget.
Right.
And then they'll come back with a budget amendment and put it in the, where it should be.
But for now, we're just, we're gonna move forward with the budget we have.
Right, in January, probably.
We wouldn't do a budget amendment before the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Even though we know it's gonna have to happen because you're gonna have it for wages, benefits and-
Or you're gonna get budget amendments throughout the year depending on the projects that are done.
And you don't even know how much money is coming over to the assets, over to your little funds. Because there'll be money coming because we can spend it on.
Yeah, but they're figuring that there's money in there that they would spend.
Right, there's both money in there that you'll spend and money there that you did not or would not spend based on.
But I think for now, we have to move forward with the budget we have.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Approve that, these as we move forward with it from staff and that, then the budget amendments will start coming forward.
Well, basically by approving like what the CIP, we're basically telling staff what we wanna do next year. And then we'll fund it through the budget and then, and then we'll have to adjust the budget.
And John, you're saying that the, you're pretty sure that none of what we're approving in the CIP is in the budget?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I would say the majority of the water and sewer-
Right.
CIP are covered in the current budget. I just can't quantify for you how much of it.
Okay.
Without Lenny and I going back, summarizing these, comparing it to what we have in the budget so we can tell you.
What's changed?
We'll be able to tell you this Tuesday night, for sure. We'll be able to tell you this Tuesday night, for sure, and maybe even do a additional attachment to the board packet on Thursday, depending on what happens between now and then.
And then we won't have fire, and then, um-
Yeah, there's not gonna be any changes to fire.
Buildings and grounds.
Are we not doing anything with recreation? We're not gonna worry about the courts? We're gonna wait and see what happens with-
Lawnmower, period. Yep. And I can tell you that a fifteen thousand dollar purchase, you could probably do with the current budget, because there's usually big chunks that are set aside for things that come up, like dark store reimbursements, that kinda thing. It's just not something we would wanna do in the first quarter of the year, because you haven't gone through the majority of the dark store cases.
We don't need it in the first part of the year.
Correct, but we need to be ordering it and paying for it.
Well, that's probably true.
On the first of the year, we need to have, we need to have quotes in hand, so that at the first meeting, we can present it to the board for authorization to purchase.
Do we need another special meeting before Tuesday's meeting?
No.
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 Don't think so?
Because the budget we're approving, we have, we know we have-
There's just so many, there's so many ifs.
Right now, right? We know we have some money that's excess, because we didn't know what was gonna happen with the Blue Cross and the union wages, so.
The, the budget that you will be considering Tuesday has a full twelve percent increase in Blue Cross in it. I did make those changes before I compiled it all. We're still waiting on the wages and any impacts that'll have on pensions, social security, all that.
The rollups, yeah.
That's really the biggest unknown, as of right now, if the motion on the floor passes.
So the budget we have, we're passing, but there's actually, it's a different budget. Because this is, is this what got published, these numbers, got posted in the paper?
Not what's in your binder, no.
That's what I mean, our, what we have.
What's in the packet for next Tuesday added another two percent to the health insurance premiums over what we had originally budgeted. And it increased the replacement and improvement lines, I think in the water fund, to the same numbers as we have in the current year budget.
So, you should send me those updated numbers, 'cause I'll put that on-
I already did.
So will we get, do we get a whole new packet, or just a page replacement?
Oh, wait, I sent them to Lois.
Yeah, you send me that stuff, and I'll just make sure it's on the website, so people can see that.
And we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do that, which means we'll need everyone's binders, I think.
Well, it's gonna be on the website, you can just download it. I'll, I'll get the stuff from John. The proposed budget that'll be for the public hearing, it'll be on the website today. You can download it from there, and put it in.
But everything's gonna be in the paper?
It's already in the paper.
I haven't seen it.
It was two, two, three weeks ago.
It was in the nineteenth of November.
The paper, hmm, don't get that.
It was in the nineteenth of November.
It was a Friday.
Friday.
We asked it to be the weekend edition, and, and they couldn't fit it, so it went in on Friday.
So we're going to, I just, I don't know, 'cause I got such a headache, I'm having a hard time, maybe. We're going to get a new budget, or, yeah, a new budget-
Updated.
To approve, I mean, 'cause we're, all we're approving is the CIP today. We'll get, we'll have the conversation, and have a whole new paper budget for Tuesday's meeting.
Yes, but it's not, it's not going to be amended based on the CIP discussion we have. 'Cause that's too much work between now and Thursday.
That'll be part of the updates.
We have to do a full-blown analysis on making sure where we're gonna tell you we expect to take the money from, whether it's twenty-twenty-two revenues, or reserves or fund balance.
Because whatever we have left in twenty-one, like Linda was saying, it'll be dumped in. So we can make some of those budget amendments from that. I mean, that-
Yeah, that won't happen until, like, March or April, I think, because you have to have all of your year-end-
If you're talking, yes, okay, if you're talking about that final budget.
Have to put out on bids, anyway, so.
I just wanna make sure what, what I'm approving in the CIP.
You gotta go get it off the curb, bullshit.
So by approving the CIP, we're just telling them they can adjust that budget for next year?
We can do everything in our power to find a way with the resources we have, new and existing funds, to accomplish that agenda. Knowing full well that you're gonna see every one of them again, anyway, because we need your authorization to spend it when it's time.
Well, when we approve the budget, we approve the CIP. We don't have to do them independently, but it's not hurting anything to do it now.
I don't, I don't agree with that philosophy.
That's what we've done. That's why, that's why it got-
I can tell you, everywhere else I've been, and you can do it this way, that's fine, I'm not telling you differently. What I'm saying is, the CIP gets approved irregardless of what ends up in the budget.
Oh, yeah, 'cause that's your plan.
Right.
That's your plan, and then the budget is your reality.
But that's what we've done, right or wrong.
Okay.
We've approved the CIP by approving the budget.
In an ideal world, you fully fund your CIP every year, but that doesn't always happen. That's the issue.
We're too late in the buy, too late in the cycle to do all that. If we were six months earlier, we should have done a lot of that.
Right, but I do think we have a realistic CIP, too, because we whittle a whole bunch of stuff out of here that we were never gonna be able to afford next year, anyway. Right?
Well, and that doesn't mean that the twenty-three stuff goes away. If, if, if whatever on here says twenty-three, we just save it and put it in twenty-three.
Yeah, next year, yeah.
So, I mean, that's part of, maybe I need to explain to you my vision of this, because it ends up in a binder, and you've got the years.
Yeah, and I'd love it, I'd love it to be that way. That's the way I thought it was going to go, but-
We just, we had to put it together, because it wasn't done.
My unfortunate misunderstanding was, that process was handled by the planning department. The planning department brought it to the Planning Commission, and brought it back to us, exactly the same way. So there wasn't any effort, really, beyond the Planning Commission discussing it in between, because there was no guidance on it. So that tells me in the future, I'm gonna have to steer this thing, start to finish, or it's not gonna get done right to your expectations, unfortunately.
Well, there was a lot of frustration at the Planning Commission about the whole deal. So I think if we start early, and we have an understanding, I, I think the Planning Commission has lived through changes all the time, is what I felt what Jim Johnson was saying. They never knew what they were supposed to be doing.
Right, the Planning Commission is responsible to pass the CIP, but there is no way, in my opinion, that they can do what we just did with Lenny.
So, it's- Well, I, I guess that, I guess that, I, I guess we can have that discussion with the Planning Commission and see. I, I think they're an important part of township government, and I think that it's important to share responsibilities that are able to be shared with other people, so you get other people interested in being part of township government. Otherwise, I can tell you, you will have no helpers.
What a thing is, is a lot of this stuff could be vetted at the Planning Commission, and when it comes to us, it's really not. It's a, it's a real scaled-down version.
But you have to have commissioners willing to do that, planning commissioners.
As long as the board's willing to take a scaled-down version.
Well, I think maybe-
I think this was essential.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think we'll just work on it, starting in January.
We should certainly be able to improve the process moving forward, because it's now very clear that the Planning Commission needs more leadership at the staff level than they got this year.
Well, and, you know, again, COVID changes, non-face-to-face meetings. This is so much better than looking back at people.
So maybe for the next budget, we seriously consider, 'cause the board said no a few years ago, changing that dais.
Changing what?
The dais in the boardroom, so that we can have a better conversation. They didn't wanna spend five grand to fix it.
Well, maybe you don't have to spend five grand.
Well, that's what they said.
It's horrible. John blocks me all the time.
I know, I know.
But I'm saying, let's just think about that for the next, if we have excess money, maybe we do it this year.
Well, maybe there's ways to look at things, you know, it's always, and I think we need to fix the technology in that room.
Well, we are working on that.
I can't see where it would cost five thousand.
That is in the budget, by the way.
Yeah, that's in the budget.
They didn't know if it was on the carpet, how to imagine. They couldn't remember, and it wasn't in the file, whether the, the electrical was underneath, if it came from the floor. They'd have to tear up the cement. It was just a big process.
Let's just move them, probably push them.
And the carpet, they didn't know if it was on the carpet, or the carpet was around it.
Well, that room's eight years old, now, so it's, it's time.
That was the people who put it in.
Put it on the fold. So I have to do is take the whole damn thing out, put it on wheels, and then you can wheel it around.
We got a motion on the floor, too.
Yeah, we gotta vote on that, approve the CIP for twenty-twenty-two. No, I do not, 'cause I-
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Well, we have more stuff on there.
Well, we don't need public comment. We didn't get any emails or anything, right, Randy?
No, no. So the only motions I have that I approved were to approve the agenda as presented, that was approved, and to approve the CIP as discussed for twenty-twenty-two, and that was approved.
So I guess maybe we should, do we need to make a motion to move the strategic plan discussion to January?
No, 'cause we'll just schedule that.
So your motion will be just for the CIP?
Correct, yeah.
All right, so on a future agenda, I need to add the strategic one.
I'll just make a note that we didn't get to the strategic plan today, and it will be moved to a, a future agenda.
So let me ask you this, then. Do you want to have another work session to talk about the strategic plan?
I think early January would be good, after the holidays.
Or just have it on, on the agenda?
Well, I think we should have a work session, because I don't think it's productive to have it at the meeting, 'cause we should have a sit-down session like this. It's not productive to be at the business meeting.
Well, I just didn't know if the board, because we vetted it for all day, vetted?
Well, that's fine. If they wanna approve it as presented, that's fine, too, but, you know.
You wanna talk about it again, another work session?
Talk about what?
The strategic plan.
Not until John and, and to get that stuff together, how they wanna do it, so probably in six months, we'll probably have it done with it.
Not the CIP, the strategic plan that we went through with Susan Redmore.
Well, we're talking, we're talking, oh, that one, yeah.
We haven't proved it.
I think we talk about it in, um, January.
We do a work session in January, and then we approve it at a meeting. And that's what we'll do. 'Cause it's not productive to do it at the business meeting.
No, I agree. I just didn't know if everybody felt comfortable enough to approve it at a meeting.
I went through it, that's pretty much what we talked about.
Yeah, and then I'll move to adjourn, then.
Support.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Three-twenty?
Three-twenty.
So I just have two little things.